We're gonna have recognition first and then the pledge. Go ahead, Scott.
And I just want to stop by remind everybody this meeting is being held virtually in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Members of the public can access the meeting obviously through the Zoom link. And that all of our votes will be roll call votes also in accordance with that order. And that when it comes time for a public comment, if you could put in the chat that you would like to speak during public comment, I will then bring you as a panelist and ask you to unmute to give you the opportunity to speak during public comment.
Scott, one more thing before we proceed is, are you recording this?
Yes, this meeting is being, and we should also note this meeting is being recorded to be replayed on Area 15.
Thank you.
Why don't we do the pledge first and then the recognitions?
Okay, that sounds good. Do you have your flag ready?
Somebody share my waving flag.
You'd all say the Pledge of Allegiance?
One second, Andy, I gotta get my flag up. All right.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
The flag comes in handy for Zoom meetings. All right, so we have a recognition of the school nurses. You notice I'm wearing my Carver hat tonight. I ditched the NASA hat for a meeting.
Okay, so we just want to start by recognizing, the administrative leadership team would like to take a few minutes to recognize professionalism, dedication, hard work that our nurses have demonstrated during the COVID-19 pandemic. They've worked diligently to provide a safe environment for all of our students and for our staff and ultimately for the community. And we want to take a few minutes before the school to recognize their extraordinary efforts. So the nurses have really taken the lead in contact tracing. So you know, the incidents that we have had within the district, the nurses have worked with the contact tracers from the COVID team and from our local nursing group that the town's now working with, with identifying close contacts. You know, obviously they're working with our students who are in school, when any kind of illness comes up and having a lot of communications with families in terms of the appropriate steps to take, the procedures to follow, the processes to follow. They're calling every student who is sick. So if you are, if you're a student at home and you stay home, the nurse is calling to the house to find out why you're home, give advice, give support. And you know, that's taking up a large portion of their day. And then they're also just providing a lot of support. They've been getting a lot of calls from staff members or family members who are kind of, you know, giving them situations that might even be outside of school, but obviously relates to the kids because they're trying to make decisions about whether kids should be coming to school or whether staff members should be coming to school. So their level of communication with the community has just been really extraordinary and really outstanding. And then when we look at our metrics tonight, and I mentioned this a little bit last time at the last meeting, you know, a lot of the work in terms of what's going into those metrics for our COVID dashboard, our attendance, you know, all that information is really being tracked by our four-person nursing team. So I just want to, I can't give enough thanks and recognition to our four nurses Karen Showen and Jessica Foley at Middle High School and Vera Burkabine and Nancy Conley at the elementary school. I did bring them in as panelists. I don't know if they want to say anything, but we certainly could invite them to say a few words and maybe talk about their work a little bit. I did put them on the spot a little bit because I didn't necessarily tell them that I was going to invite them to speak. But if any of them are interested in speaking, well, I'll give you the chance to, I'll ask you to unmute and you can certainly unmute and say a few words, but you don't have to.
That'd be great. If anybody wants to, yeah, put your video on and your, and your, or you don't have to put your video on, but you'll put your sound on and give us maybe some steps or some experiences you've had if you'd like.
Hi Scott, it's Karen. It won't let me turn my video on, which is...
I can let you, I can, if you give me half a second, I can allow you to, and Nancy Conley just joined us as a panelist, so all four nurses are here. And Karen, if you give me a second, I can let you turn your video on. Okay, you should be able to turn your video on now.
There you go. I was kind of hoping that wouldn't, I was hoping that wouldn't work, but okay. Yeah, you totally put us on the spot, but thank, I just want to say thanks for the recognition. We appreciate it. It's been quite a different year. It's been a ton of work. Most are answering questions, as you said, and it's just been a real team effort here. And also, a lot of thanks to the parents. They've been really supportive, understanding that these are new times and the rules are tough this year. You know, we're asking a lot from the parents and the students and our staff to follow these new guidelines. And for the most part, everybody's really been on board and cooperative. It's, it's just been a lot of work, but it's been made a lot easier by the support of everybody, including the administrative team. I know at the high school, I can speak for the middle high school, the admin team at Central Office has been tremendously supportive. So we really appreciate that as well. So, yeah, our days are just lots of phone calls. As you said, we call every single kid, every single family of somebody who is absent to find out why. If it's illness related, we get more information. We take them through the steps of what's required to return to school in the, you know, effort of trying to keep the community safe, the school community. We get a lot of questions from staff. As you said, it's not always about school. It's about their own families. So we're just trying to get the information out there and, you know, keep our doors open. That's our goal. Keep people safe, keep the kids in school and try to stay healthy for everybody.
That's great. Everybody appreciates it, yeah.
I don't know if anybody else, again, not forcing anybody else to speak. Karen is the nurse leader since she took on the role of speaking for the group, but if someone else does want to, you can just let me know.
Don't everybody jump at once. Oh, there we go, Jessica.
I also just wanted to say thank you to the community for being so cooperative and patient with us. It has not been easy and everybody has been really willing to work with us and understand the situation that we're in and that it's not just our responsibility, but it's, I don't know, back for lack of better words, it's our priority to make sure the kids are safe and healthy. And we need to just work together and make sure this year works well and the school and the parents are doing really well to help us do that. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Do any of the members have any questions for our four nurses or comments? No? All right, well, I commend, oh wait, Jen does. Jen Pratt.
I always have something to say. I was just gonna say thank you to all four of our nurses for all of your hard work. I know that your days are a lot busier than they used to be and it is greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. And over at the elementary school, we have been very well supported by our administration and our fellow teaching teams. So it's truly been a team effort. It's been a lot of work. I know everybody's been working hard, but it's worth it when you see the kids out there enjoying their time at school. So, thanks again, and I appreciate everyone, you know, coming together. It's, we've got a long road ahead of us and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. I know the community, I'm sure the community appreciates all your efforts and I know I appreciate all your diligence and goes without saying. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm gonna disinvite you as a panelist, if that's okay.
That sounds really antisocial.
Yeah, I know. Sorry, give me a second.
That was some good insight for the community, hearing from them in the committee.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Oh, did you have something else?
Nope, go ahead, Andy.
Okay, we have comments from the general public to move on to next. Does anybody, would anybody like to make a comment to the committee?
Again, just put your name in the chat and I will move you up to a panelist and give you permission to speak.
Can't see anything. Don't see anybody. Do you see anybody?
I do not.
Okay, well, moving on then. We have comments from the EAPC.
All right, give me a second. I'll bring Tammy Johnson up as a panelist.
Okay.
And Tammy, give me a second to, yeah, let's lie to turn your video on, and invite you to speak. Tammy, you should be...
Tammy.
So, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to have this opportunity reiterate how invaluable our nursing team has been. Even throughout the summer, they have been nonstop and it was a really amazing recognition. And I think it was just great because they are incredible resource and just so supportive. So, tonight, I'm very excited as well as apprehensive to have this opportunity to share a proposal with you. As members of the Carver School Committee, you have the choice to consider, support, enter and/or participate. We, members of the EAPC, hope you take careful consideration of our proposal and assist us as we develop a diversity and inclusion committee for our school. I have been a co-chair, currently Chair, of the MTA Equal Opportunity Council for the past five years. For the last four years, we have been in the process of creating a diversity, inclusion, and racial justice plan for the people that work at the MTA. This process has not been easy. However, the process has been incredibly rewarding. I have found myself on a path of discovery and growth, developing a sense of self-awareness and a deeper understanding of existing inequitable societal systems and policies. Yet, this is just the first step. The next step is to develop and carry out an action plan with the goal of creating a diverse culture that feels inclusive for all people. Last year, a group of educators in Carver met to read and discuss the book Waking Up White by Debbie Irving, a local author from Massachusetts. This book discussion continued throughout the school year and extended throughout the summer with the Plymouth School District. We met and talked about our experiences and how they related to different topics throughout the book. We all came away feeling like we have made a first step on a path towards a positive change. We are eager to continue this journey. This journey can only be as successful as the people involved. These conversations are not easy. They're not comfortable, but they are powerful. Much can be learned from each other and there is much we can do. The first step is to make a commitment. Here is my proposal. Develop a positive school culture and climate change through the development of a diversity inclusion committee made up of staff, administration, and school committee. The committee will develop self-awareness around issues of racism and policies, analyze our school culture, and develop goals and action plans designed to develop equitable policies and practices. Here's my plan. Propose this, this development for the committee, to the school committee. Facilitate a book discussion around, kind of starting in December. Create committee with participants from book discussion. Develop mission statement and plan with committee. Analyze culture and develop goals using the data. Create action plan and carry out first steps. Your support for this proposal would be greatly admired. It is not an easy step, but a powerful one. One of my favorite quotes is from James Baldwin. I actually have his poster hanging up on my wall. And he's one of, that I really think fits in this scenario. Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, we're going to approval of minutes. We have two different open session meetings, meeting minutes to approve tonight. First, to September 10th, 2020, I would take a motion to approve these minutes.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve the September 10th, is it October 16?
Second.
Minutes, if we can bundle them, yeah.
It's, it's September 10th and October 22nd.
October 22nd, sorry.
Yeah, we can bundle them, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Okay, we, okay, heard that correctly. All right, any discussion, concern, corrections?
I noticed that there are a few spelling errors and a few errors in the ones from September towards like the very bottom. Do you want me to send an email to Gina or Gina's here, right? So.
You can, you could propose to...
Propose to change them, okay.
Okay, we don't need a motion for that, do we? Just, just a correction?
Grammatical edit.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second with a grammatical edit for October, is it October 22nd, Stephanie?
This September.
September 10th.
September 10th.
All right, and then we also have a motion and a second for the October 22nd, 2020. This is a roll call vote. I'll call Jason Greenwood.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
Jen Pratt?
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
James O'Brien?
James O'Brien, aye. Just to clarify though, Andy, the way you sort of presented it, it almost sounded like there were two motions. This is one unified motion, yes.
Right.
Aye.
Right, thank you. And Stephanie Clory.
Stephanie Clory, aye.
Okay, Andy Cottrelli, aye as well. Bundling and approval of minutes with the grammatical edit is approved. Okay, we move on to update by Student Council, Quinton Kittredge.
Okay, so we're, we're excited to, returning to a little bit of normalcy. So the Student Council at the middle high school has begun work, has been working this fall. So we have a representative from the Student Council here tonight, Quinton Kittredge, who I've invited as a, I've made him a panelist and I can see he's joined us. So Quinton, Quinton's a senior at the middle high school. And so, but if you could just introduce yourself to the committee, maybe tell your role at Student Council and then give us an update of what's been happening, that'd be great.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. I'm Quinton. I am a spirit coordinator. I've been in Student Council for the past three years. I've been part of the executive board for the past two as spirit coordinator in both. My job is to run the pep rallies, to spread awareness to everyone in our schools about all the different events that we hold and everything like that. First off, I'd like to add, during the summertime, we had two car washes. We have, we made a total of $800 from that. With the pandemic hitting, we had to change our way of voting in people for our executive board and we did it through Zoom. Very different, not easy. We had to take videos of everyone doing their speech and try and show it on Zoom. And Mr. Treska was having a lot of difficulties with that, but it went well. As our new president, it's Haley Kaczynski. As Vice President, we have Jenna DeLuca. Maya Magnusson as our secretary, Jamie Robinsons as our publicity coordinator, Jay Peters as our council historian, and Dylan Young as our council delegate. He is actually a freshman and it's very nice to have him. One challenge we've experienced is holding monthly meetings and adding members. A lot of students are very scared about joining, mostly to come help us like decorate the school and do like the car wash when we know we need to keep distance from everyone, wear masks. Some people are just too fearful to go and affect themselves, affect others, as well as us, or affect their family when they come back home. But we're always looking for more members. We actually have, we have added about eight or 10 more members. We're about at 25 members right now, full Student Council, which is very good. It's increased in the past three years, so that's very good. During the month of October, we organized and hosted our first service project, which was to raise awareness for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. We went around to every single door in our school on a Wednesday. When there was no school, it was just the online school. We decorated every door with a poster board for Make-A-Wish with a couple stars. And we did every door because Mr. Schultz donated $1,000 for, for all the teachers so that every door would be included. So there is no, no one not included. We raised a total of 1,500 from the, the school and the community. 10 local businesses donated a minimum of $40. And we, we create a theme every year for, for Student Council. And this year, we wrote Spread Kindness and Not Germs, which we thought fit very well at the time. We have, we, we have our own little display case in the middle of our school right by the library that everyone walks past and it's covered in Spread Kindness, Not Germs. And that's our big thing. We want to try and use a lot of donations and a lot of things like that, like working with Make-A-Wish. And we're gonna try and do that project every single month. We also have our Fall Virtual CMAS Conference. CMAS is our Southeast Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. And that is when we come together as all the southeast of Massachusetts of student councils. And this year, it's gonna be on Zoom. And we all are going to talk about everything that all of our different schools do. We try and do different, like meetings between certain councils. And it, it works really well for a lot of ideas for the new schools. Maybe if they have a newer council or they have a very big council or a small council, the big councils can give the smaller councils ideas for what they can do for their school. That's very good. The CMAS Conference is going to be November 17. And, and for my final thing is, we have already decided that in December, we are going to make care packages for the troops. We did the same thing last year when we had this very big winter, winter fundraiser, you might say, but it was really a big thing for the whole school so that everyone could get involved. Played a lot of games last year. We're not gonna be able to do that this year, but we still are gonna be able to do the care packages. We're gonna have students, teachers, and everyone be able to donate things like shaving, food, snacks, things like that. And we're gonna send it to the troops.
That's great. Are you taking donations from the community or just the school, the school law community?
I don't think we've fully talked about how we're going to get donations. We are probably just gonna have it do the school so that we don't have as many people showing up at the school to donate. But a lot of the students donated last year and it worked really well.
Great. Good job. Anybody have any comments or questions for Quinton on Student Council? Is our update?
Thanks for visiting and nice to see you.
Very nice to see you as well. Thank you.
And, and obviously, one of the things we lost when we, in March, when the pandemic started, is we kind of, we lost connection with having our Student Council, our Student Council representative at each meeting. Quinton, we'd like to see that. We'd like to return that. We're glad you were here this evening. And if, and I'll talk to Mr. Treska and if you can let him know as well. I would love to have a representative from the executive board. If it's you all the time, that'd be great. But whoever it happens to be, you know, a member of the executive board, join us each meeting and kind of give us an update on what's happening in the school. We would greatly appreciate it. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you, Quinton. We appreciate you coming and talking to us and giving us those updates. Great job.
Thank you.
Stephanie, did you have something?
I just wanted to say thank you, Quinton. I appreciate all of your efforts and I appreciate you coming to chat with us. And if there's anything we can ever do, please don't hesitate to reach out and email us. I know we're kind of sort of part of the school. I think we could probably drop off some donations maybe and help you guys out if you need anything. So, we're here if you need anything. Thank you.
Such appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Quinton. Jason, did you have something? Excellent. Quinton, thank you for the very thorough update. I was at one of the car washes over the summer and I have to say, my car's getting dirty now. So I don't know if you're gonna have another one, but...
It's starting to get cold.
I know. But thank you very much, Quinton. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
All right, that was great. Okay, so going on to communications, first one we have is a grants received or grant received.
Second, I'll go back to the agenda. So I just want to let the committee and the community know that we are excited, that we're excited to announce we received a planning grant for the approval of an innovative innovations pathway in manufacturing at the middle high school. The grant is for $28,500. It's gonna assist us in implementing our manufacturing and engineering pathway. And it's actually the first step into a second part of the grant. So this is part A. This is the planning grant. And then as part of the planning grant, we actually apply for a second grant, which would be the full approval as an innovations pathway. So we'd have our manufacturing, engineering and technology pathway approved by the state as an innovation pathway, which is a lot that comes with that. And it'll also be another part of money. The secondary part of money would be larger, would actually go towards, you know, a lot of supplies and materials to help, you know, really implement, fully implement a manufacturing pathway. I want to recognize Meredith for a second because Meredith's done a lot of work in coordination with Mike Schultz and Dave Ruder, our new manufacturing technology engineering teacher, Michelle Lilithin, our science department chair. Meredith's kind of taken the lead in coordinating our application for this grant and then coordinating our second piece of it. In our next meeting in November, we're gonna do a full presentation, kind of an update of where we stand with pathways. We'll talk about the courses we're offering this year in each pathway. And because we have taken that first step of actually implementing the pathways program. And we're excited about that work as well. So, you know, during that presentation, we'll do a more formal discussion of this grant, more formal discussion of the process for the second step in the grant, and also to, you know, like I said, get the current update where we have pathways and really the community. Because one of the other things we lost last year is, you know, Mr. Schultz had planned to do a community-wide presentation on pathways in March to really start to build up that program in the community. So the community really understood what was happening at the middle high school level in terms of having some new and innovative programmings for kids, programs for kids that we really feel are important. And, you know, like, like many things that happened when the pandemic hit, that got lost a little bit. So our school career presentation a couple weeks will be a startup for that. And then Mr. Schultz at the building level will be doing presentations for kids and parents about the opportunities available through pathways. And this, this was a competitive grant. So this, this is not a grant that you apply for and you get. Meredith may know the exact number, but there was a handful of school districts that received this grant, five or six. So this was a competitive process and, and we're really excited about it. Meredith, I don't know if you want to add anything on to that. I know, like I said, we're gonna do a more formalized presentation about this in a couple weeks.
Yeah, we can save it for our second November meeting, but I just wanted to say that many hours have gone into this and it's been a team effort. And so I'm grateful not only for the many people that have been willing to meet and brainstorm about this, but the community partners and administration that has also been super supportive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Congratulations and thank you for all your hard work. And with everyone on that team, does anybody have any questions or comments about this grant? I don't see anybody. All right.
And then...
Because we want to be free lunch officially at 2021.
Yeah, then this is, this is more an update for the community. We haven't, I know the food service, our new food service director, Teresa Verrazano has put this out to the community, this letter. But we haven't actually shared it at the school. We haven't talked about it recently. I know in the spring, we talked a lot about services in terms of lunch and free meals. You know, so the United States Department of Agriculture has done an extension in terms of, in essence, free meals for all students throughout the school year. So students who are in school get free lunch and free breakfast. Then we're also offering free lunch and breakfast for pickup on Mondays and Wednesdays. That's been going on for, really since almost two months now. But we just haven't really talked about it here at the school committee meeting. So I just wanted to bring this letter that went out to the community, to the committee, and give it another opportunity to be shown and talked about. Brad, I don't know if there's anything you want to add on to this. Because I know you've been taking the lead with, you know, the food service program in terms of implementing this.
You have nothing to add? Just for the to-go meals on the remote days, students can take three meals home for the week. That's the big advantage we have with this right now. So, outside of that, we also did just get a letter from Desi... So outside of that, we also did just get a letter from Desi saying that after-school snacks were approved. So we're going to work with the, uh, a couple of the YMCA program and also with our athletic department on how we can actually get our student-athlete snacks right after school. So we're trying to extend that.
And this is all reimbursable?
Yep.
Everything's a hundred percent?
Yep, a hundred percent. I think it's, we get reimbursed at like three twenty-five or three forty-five somewhere in there per meal.
Okay.
For, for lunch, excuse me, breakfast, I think is like two twenty-five, two thirty-five somewhere in there.
Okay.
But again, it's free. We encourage everyone to take advantage of it.
Right.
Yep.
View of that.
Okay.
All right. Anybody have any questions about the free meals program for twenty-one? I can't see everybody. Okay. So moving on, we go to reports from the superintendent, a personnel updates.
All right. So we do have a couple of personnel movements since our last meeting. We have a few new hires, Tom Sullivan as an ESP at the middle high school, Liam Davidson as a bus monitor and Wayne Edwards as a seven D bus driver. We also have one of our longtime custodians notify us that he's going to retire. So Bruce Stooly, I'll be retiring effective twelve seventeen twenty. So towards the end of December, he'll be retired.
Well, okay. He's been around a long time.
Yes.
Okay, uh, fall sports update.
All right. So I need to invite, I'm going to invite Mike Santos, our assistant AD, to join us as a panelist. Just give me a second. Hi, Mike. You, you should be here with us. You should be able to turn your video on and yep, there we go. And I will open up the presentation and just, just let me know when, uh, you want me to go to the next slide. So excited to have Mike here with us to kind of give us an update on our fall sports season, maybe talk a little bit about winter sports.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Thanks for having me. You know, I'm excited that we get to finally talk about fall sports. So that's a good thing because that means that we've been able to keep them going throughout the season. So I just want to thank everyone for letting me just have a couple of minutes just to go over kind of an overview of what happened in the fall, where we're heading and what winter looks like. So I just want to start off by thanking, you know, as we know, there's been a lot of hiccups in the fall, but there's a lot of people who've worked really hard. So we just wanted to thank administration, the coaches, the players, athletic trainer Phil, um, from the groundskeeping crew to our nurses. Everybody's really played a big part in this fall to keep it going and keep it where it is right now. So we just want to thank everyone to start. This was our fall sports record. We had five sports participate in this fall. So boys soccer had a really strong season. They had ten seniors this year. So they're, they're going to be missed next year, but they had a really good season. Girl soccer as well. They had a lot of injuries this year, unfortunately. So they're still fighting, they're still battling, but they, they're a little injury prone this year. Field hockey and golf, both very young teams this year. They had a lot of eighth graders. So we're really looking forward to the future for that. It's a really good sign for us. And then cross country has been tough. The numbers just weren't there this fall for multiple reasons, but we've had a lot of good individual runners this year who are placing first and second. We just don't have the numbers unfortunately to get any points this year. So all around good year for the fall. What we've decided to do as a South Shore League is we are moving into our fall tournaments. We unfortunately don't get to have our state tournaments like we normally do. So what we've done this year as a league is we've created kind of just a league tournament. So for boys and girls soccer, it's going to be a double elimination tournament where we have two divisions. It's called the Tobin and the Sullivan. We are in the Tobin with five other teams. The Sullivan has five other teams in the league. So each league, each division is going to be doing a double elimination tournament. And then at the end, to get the league winner, we're going to have the Tobin winner versus Sullivan winner for a final. Field hockey, very similar. There's just less teams. So it's only going to be one group throughout the whole league of five teams. And same thing will be a double elimination tournament. Golf, they were lucky enough yesterday to get their final league meet in. There were four schools who competed. These were our three competitors. We had Owen Chaney, a senior, and then two eighth graders, Kyle Hoffman and Finn Manning, who competed and they finished in fourth yesterday. And then cross country is going to have their league meet next Wednesday, Veterans Day, November eleventh. We are paired up, each school got paired up against another school. We're running against Cohasset. And Middleborough has been nice enough to let us use their venue for the league meet. The schedules come out. This is our first round. I just wanted to let everyone know that we are going to try and livestream the majority of these games. Norwell has been nice enough to give us some equipment that we're going to try and use in livestream. I put our Twitter account on and at the end, it's at Cava Crusaders, but that's, we will send out the link for families to watch. So this is just kind of a quick schedule. Girl soccer will be playing at Hull this Saturday. Field hockey will have a home match for their first round this Sunday. And then as things are always changing, we found out today that we were supposed to play helpful boy soccer, but it's now going to be Mashpee. So that time has to be determined. And then as I mentioned earlier, cross country will be next week and we had golf yesterday. And then I just figured it'd be nice just to share some highlights of the season from each sport. I know it's been tough. We, we've, and families have been great. We really haven't had many problems. So I just wanted to share some photos because I know a lot of families, a lot of community members haven't been able to come out and kind of see the athletes perform this year. So I just kind of wanted to share some photos from each sport. This is just girl soccer. We had four seniors who graduated, so they did great. And then, you know, we have Aslan, our captain on the right against Abington and Gabby Tabajin on the bottom. So you can see it's very different. The athletes have been great with the mask. We really haven't had any problems. So that's been a great, great opportunity for our kids. And then this is just some more photos of boy soccer. On the left, we have the team photo. Mike Swicki, who I'll get to at the end, had a huge career highlight this year. And then on the right is Justin Ritz in a home game where we were winning early, two to nothing. We ended up winning that game pretty easy, seven, nothing against Middleborough. So that was great. Field hockey again looks very different with the mask, the rule change. We have Matty Butler trying to score on the top here. And on the bottom left, we have our two seniors who are graduating this year. We've had a great career with us, Lexa Gallagher and Emily Stagnita. This is our golf team. And again, I mentioned we, we are very young. So on the top left and the bottom, we have two eighth graders, Finn and Kyle. And they were the ones who also on the top right competed with Owen Chaney in the league tournament yesterday. So the future's bright for golf, which is a great sign for us. And our last sport, we have the cross country team on the right there. And then I just want to say thank you to Mike Fraccolosi, our cross country coach, who on the left had to basically recreate an entire new map, I guess you should say, just for the course that we're running this year. They, they've changed a lot of the rules where you can't intersect and runners can't cross each other and they have to start at different times. So Mike really took a long time kind of to go through the course, find a new path for our students to run, make it safe for them. So I just wanted to show it in there that it did take a lot of work. And like I said, we want to thank all the coaches and athletes for really being able to just kind of change things on the fly for the fall season for us. And then lastly, I just wanted to end on a positive note with some of the highlights that have happened in the fall. We've had multiple athletes this year nominated by the Patriot Ledger for boy soccer, girl soccer, golf, cross country. So it's been a really positive and bright spot for our teams. A lot of schools haven't been able unfortunately in our league to finish off the fall season. And I think it's really a testament to everybody who's working or has a hand in our fall sports, just to say that we're able to complete the fall season. You know, like I said, a lot of teams weren't able to do that. So that's something we're really proud of. We have a competition, a tournament, even though it's small, it's still something that I think our athletes are looking forward to, to have something to compete in after the regular season. And then on the right here is Michael Swicki. He is a senior this year. He plays boy soccer and he hit a milestone this year, which was he received a hundred points. And basically a point is if you get an assist or a goal in soccer. So this year he's been able to exceed that number and he surpassed the hundred points. So we are very excited for Mike, a wonderful kid, great student, great athlete. To finish it up, I know everybody's probably going to have this question in their head, what's happening with winter? Right now currently, they're still working out the winter season. Step one is for the EEA basically to come up with some guidance, which we're hoping to get either the end of this week, early next week. Step two would then be to have the sport committees, the MIA COVID Task Force and the MIA board kind of review what the EEA comes out with and then vote on it. And then once that gets voted on as a South Shore League, all the A.D.s would come together, kind of like we did in the fall, discuss how we want to move forward with it. And then again, just always follow us on Twitter at Cava Crusaders. That's where we like to post a lot of our scores. We'll have some updates to the tournament if things get changed. That's kind of one of our main central points of just kind of where to locate all those changes. And that's it. That's really all I have for the fall athletics. Again, thank you. I appreciate you giving us that time, kind of just to share these positive moments and highlights for athletics. It's been crazy, but we're just happy and excited that we've, you know, we've given our athletes something. And again, it may not have been what they wanted, but at least we have something for them and we were able to finish it in a health, healthy and kind of safe way for everyone. So I just want to say thank you for giving us this time to kind of speak about it.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Thank you for that update. It's good to see the kids out there at least doing something in some type of structured sports. And, and you know, even though some of the win-loss records aren't what they want, you know what? But that's experience I'll use for victories in the future for sure.
Absolutely.
Anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Santos? Stephanie?
I just want to say thank you for all of your efforts. I know that this was certainly not, like you said, an ideal season, but I do appreciate all the efforts that yourself and all of the coaches and all of the staff had put in to, um, to bring the kids the season that they were able to have. So thank you very much for coming and sharing some highlights with us. And I look forward to seeing what, to what you guys are able to do for the next season.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Jen?
Yeah, I'll just read what Stephanie said and also add on that, um, you know, the feedback that I've received with the community is that they were very grateful that we had yourself and the coaching staff and everyone else who's involved, you know, worked so hard to be able to make fall sports happen, all the guidelines that had to be adhered to and all the changes. You know, sports are a huge outlet for a lot of our student community and for them to be able to have that opportunity, even if it looked different. To, you know, it brought back some sense of normalcy in letting them do what they loved and have that outlet. And so I know that it has meant so much to the, to the community. And I know a couple of people reached out and said, you know, they had their kids try new sports because, you know, maybe their child was a football player or cheerleader and, you know, those things aren't able to happen. So they tried cross country or soccer or field hockey, you know, and tried new sports. And so, and I think those are some silver linings that may have come out of the hardship. So thank you for all of your work and effort because I think it makes a big difference to the kids in this community.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Santos. You, you definitely have an appropriate background for tonight's meeting of your update.
Thank you. Tried to set the scene, you know, for everyone. So.
You're not a Celtics fan, are you?
Can you tell?
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we move, I lost my place here, excuse me. We move on to see bi-weekly metrics and transitioning models for an update. That would weekly metrics first.
Yeah, so, uh, the state, the Department of Public Health did not release their weekly report this week. Well, they released a modified version. It does not have any of the local data. It has regional data for Plymouth County and Bristol County. And obviously all the counties in Massachusetts, but it does not have any town-specific data. And also it doesn't have the map that we usually look at in terms of, you know, the red, yellow and gray. So in terms of the weekly metrics, since we last met, there was, I have last week's data, but I do not have today's data because it hasn't been released. They're saying that they're going to release that tomorrow. So the data for this week should come out tomorrow. And I think everybody knows that, you know, across Massachusetts has been a little bit of, there's been a trend up in terms of the number of cases. But when you actually look at the districts we've been following, there's been actually a slight trend down, including Cover. So Cover last week maintained as a yellow community. We went from a total case count of twelve to eight. And from a total, total active cases from twelve to eight, total positive tests from twelve to nine. And our percentage of positivity was down from one point nine three to one point three nine. And you'll see a similar story in the majority of the communities we've been tracking. Kingston is still red, but their numbers were much better. And they went from a total case count of forty-one to nineteen, a total positive test from fifty to twenty-seven and a percent of positivity from three point nine one to two point three two. Middleborough transitioned last week from red back to yellow. So then again, their case count was down. I don't have to read all the, I guess I won't read the numbers to you for each one. They're on the screen. You can see them. But there was a little trend down in Middleborough. Plimpton has maintained, really has stayed low through most of, throughout this whole process. And Plimpton had no new positive cases reported last week. Plymouth also again was still high, maybe still a decent number of cases, but down from the previous week. The case count was down, the positive tests were down, the percentage of positivities was down. But Plymouth was also still a red community, you know, so we still had several red communities around us. Wareham, I mean, Rochester, same thing. They stayed red, but they're not, you know, obviously down minimal here from eight to seven, eight to seven, and a little bit lower percentage of positivity. The one community that tracked up was Wareham that we've been tracking. Wareham did have an increase in their case count and their positive tests from twenty-four to thirty-five, twenty-nine positive tests to thirty-nine and obviously an increased rate of positivity to three point four seven. And I don't have last week's map, but when you look at last week's map, you can see that we were being, you know, surrounded by the red a little bit. There was red, red all around us here in Cover. And we stayed, but we, as I said, we stayed as a, as a yellow community. I did put today's report in. I wasn't going to pull anything up from this because none of the data that we usually look at is in it. But it's there in the background for the school committee. Also want to show you the attendance tracker. And so, and for us individually, as a school district, it's been, we've been okay. Might bring this down a little bit. You know, so if we look since the last time we met, which was on ten twenty-two, you know, so our number of positive, we have not had a positive COVID students. We have not had any positive COVID staff members since the last time we met. So the last two weeks, we're knock on wood, we've stayed without any new positive cases. And obviously having no new positive cases in the school, a number of students in quarantine and our number of staff in quarantine has also gone down. Now, obviously we have people who are in quarantine based on, you know, being close contacts outside of the school community. So we have continued to have staff members and students who are quarantined as close contacts. You know, obviously, you know, as of today, it was nine students district-wide quarantined as close contacts. And actually today, we didn't have any staff quarantined as close contacts. And our attendance has stayed pretty consistent in terms of the percentage of attendance at the elementary school, at the middle high school and with our staff. And then I'll also show the COVID dashboard from Tuesday. Remember we update this so the community knows this is updated on Tuesdays and on Fridays. So this was updated last Tuesday. You know, no, no different numbers here, just the numbers presented in a different way. And obviously the positive thing for us as a community is we've not had any positive tests within the school community in the last two weeks. So that is kind of an update on where we are in terms of our numbers and the data that we've been tracking on a bi-weekly basis. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that or thoughts about it. Here we are. Jason?
Does the dashboard show students who only come to school or is that include remote students? Are remote students included in that data?
So remote students are not, if so, if we have a remote student who's quarantined, that is not included in that data. A full.
But if they, if they, yeah, if they test positive, would they be, or is this data just those?
I think, I think we would add that in. We haven't had a remote student test positive.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, honestly, we haven't talked about that, but. Honestly, we haven't talked about that, but I'll follow up, you know, with the nurses in terms of, I think we should know, you know, any positive tests in the community.
Would you make that?
That's a member of staff.
Would you make that a separate line in the dashboard?
I haven't thought about it.
Okay, well, it's something we can discuss. Going, just for clarity here on this item, the biweekly metrics and transitioning models, Jason asked me to put the K through two, you know, going back, back up for discussion. Because the, because the title of the agenda item is transitioning models, I decided that was, that was fine. But that discussion is up for, that topic is up for discussion. Again, if anybody wants to bring it back up or I didn't take a motion if anybody had one. I just wanted to let the committee know that that topic is pertinent.
And at this time, the administration's recommendation would not change from our last meeting that we would, to not, at this time, based on what's happening within Southeast of Massachusetts with the Massachusetts as a whole, that we, we would, the recommendation of the administration would be to not set a date at this time to transition K through two back in the school. But we, since the committee did ask this to come back up as a topic at this meeting last time, I tied this topic into, you know, looking at the metrics, which probably makes sense. In my mind, when we look at the metrics, it's always open to have this discussion about.
Right. I think that, I think though, maybe like to add it on, when we have a specific discussion on something like this, just for the, just for the public. This was, this was my fault on this, just to notify the public, so it's clear for the public that we're going to have this discussion, you know. We should have it spelled out and that was, that was on me. So does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns on, on this topic? Jen, Jen Pratt?
I've received some feedback this week from the public leading up to our meeting. There were a couple of parents that were hopeful that we might set a date. You know, I think the phrase that was used was the difference between a plan and a goal is, is having a date. So it's great to have a plan, but we should have a goal of something that we're working towards. And I, I truly do see the merit in that. I won't, I, the things that are tough me right now is I know that it's a lot of work that's going to go into transitioning models. And so I don't want to transition models rushed or too soon, just have to switch it back. I don't want to give something to the children to then take it away. But at the same token, I still feel really strongly that our K through two kids need to be in school. I was really surprised at the results of the teacher surveys because I thought we would have more staff support of that as well. And I, I just, I'm, I'm struggling with the thought of us just kind of leaving it hanging in balance. You know, our case counts are really low. We've had no student spread and that age group is so low risk. And the remote learning that is happening, especially in those grades is, is really, really, really tough. And I'm hearing that resoundingly over and over and over again. And as a parent of a child in that demographic, I see it myself, but I'm not speaking on behalf of my kid because my kid's doing okay. But the community as a whole is, is clearly telling us that they want those kids back in school. I did have another parent reach out to me this week with something that I thought was really interesting. They had to keep their kids home because they were, they were symptomatic. Their tests ended up coming back negative, which is great. But if we were full in person for that age group, their kids would have missed many days of school. Because of the remote, they only missed a couple of days and they were able to participate in the other cohorts, Zooms, while they were home. And so I don't know if Mike and Ruby are planning to cover this when they review the hybrid models in the next section. But I am curious if we were to make a motion to return K through two in person, what, what would be the options for kids that have to quarantine because they're symptomatic and they're waiting on a test result? So that they're not just marked absent and missing school? You know, and is there any type of plan in place for that? This, and I don't know that there's a formal place and plan for it now on the remote, but I mean, on the hybrid. But I think a lot of the parents and the staff have been very flexible in allowing kids to jump into the other cohort Zooms and send stuff home. And, you know, and so that they're not really being marked absent. They're still participating in school from home. And so I don't know, that's one thing that does concern me if we were to make a motion tonight to set a date is, you know, what happens to those kids that do need to quarantine once we're there? And thankfully we haven't had huge numbers, but I, I just want to throw that question out there to you, Scott, and then to anybody else that may have an answer.
We'll have to get back to you on that with a, with a formal answer. I don't have a formal answer for you right now, so if you give me some time on that. Ultimately, if everybody's back full in person, it's going to be much more difficult for us to provide remote opportunities, especially at the younger age level. And it would really be, my initial response would have to be like in the old days, if you're sick, you know, you'd have to make up the work. And, you know, if it's an extended quarantine, if a student, if a student in the old, prior to COVID, if someone was sick for a long period of time, who was going to be out for two weeks. We try to work on establishing tutoring for them. We set up a plan to work with them individually. And, you know, tutoring would be harder, but it would have to be virtually. But I don't know, I don't know if we're going to, we're going to focus our remote, our in-person teachers to be doing in-person work. And so we've got, we'd have to look at staff availability. I don't think we'd be able to provide daily live instruction. I still think we'd have the staffing to do that in a full in-person return. So that's a concern. If there is, you know, if you went full back in person and then there was a large number of students who had to be quarantined. And, you know, obviously every situation is different. If it's a large number of students, maybe there's some flexibility and we can work with some people. If it's one person, that in some ways makes it harder, you know. And then, and then we also have to have that reality. Prior to COVID, if a student missed a week of school, they worked with the teacher, got makeup work, and that's what they did. If they missed longer than a week of school, we set up tutoring. And, and I think, I don't know why this situation would be different. But that's, that's an initial response. We can get a more thorough response to that question.
James, do you have something?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm kind of on the same page as Jen in a sense that you know, there's a detriment that's going on in early education right now. Because no matter how hard everybody's trying, you can think like a teacher all you want and how successful things may be. But as a parent, when you're at home with these kids, it's, it's not happening the way that it needs to be happening. It's these young kids do not have the attentiveness and the ability to be on screen to achieve what they need to achieve the way they should be. And they're losing out. And to expect parents to be able to compensate that at home because you can't keep kids on the screen that long? I just think it's unfair. I don't think that they're getting what we owe them as a community and as an education system. I do not believe that kids that young are getting what we owe them as far as preparing them for what they're going to need to have. And, and I, I agree with Jen in a sense that, and I'm not saying I have a solution because I, I sincerely empathize and sympathize with any parent who's got a child in that situation right now, because I don't know how you do it. I really don't. And I would say the same to the teachers and I understand there are concerns, but I think we need to somehow formulate a survey or again, and I know we did something. But I really think that, that we need to find a plan that's going to start to, to propose or make a change, especially in those younger grades, because I don't know whether it's four days a week, whether, you know, a lot of districts are starting to do that where Wednesday still remains remote. I don't know if you try to compensate in other buildings or what you try to do, but I, and I understand staffing is the biggest issue. I truly get that from your perspective. But I think that there's just an overwhelming sense of the fact that what's happening, early education is, is not working effectively in a general sense. There are successes and I'm not diminishing that at all. But I think in a general sense, there's a lot of difficulty going on and I understand the safety issues. So I'm going to support the best decision for everybody in Carver. But I, I think that early education is really facing a difficult challenge right now as a parent and for students to really achieve what they need to, and given the opportunity to achieve what they need to.
Thank you, James. Does anybody else have anything? Stephanie, Jason, anyone? No. I would like to say that, Scott, on the administrative, administrative part and your, the recommendation, the numbers being low right now. What is the, what are the, what's the criteria they're working on or judging on their recommendation?
I think, yes, our numbers are low in Carver, but I think people are very concerned about the numbers in the, in the wider Southeast of Mass community. In the wider Mass community. I mean, ultimately, right now, Massachusetts is not moving in the direction of opening things up. Massachusetts is moving in the direction of reducing and setting in new guidelines. And the governor just established new protocols that go into effect tonight at midnight in terms of always having to wear a mask outside, reducing gatherings to more, no more than 10 people. To, and part of his rationale for that is he wants to see schools stay open. I think there's a concern that schools may trend towards going remote, actually. You know, several districts around us have gone remote because they've had to have taken cases. Now, we have it in Carver, but I think the general concern in the school community side is that our teachers don't only work in Carver. Our teachers come from a wide variety of communities. And our teachers are concerned about that right now, it doesn't make sense to be the time to bring more people back into the building when everything seems to be on the rise around us. And, and the administration doesn't feel that this is the appropriate time to talk about bringing more kids back into the building when everything is on the rise around us. And, and that, that, that's not the, that's, and again, it's not, although it's not, I understand that we're a cover and we have to look at cover. But we also have to look at the wider community around us as well. And certainly things are trending towards opening back up.
All right. Well, I mean, the governor also, I think twice in the last week in speeches, talked about getting the kids back full-time. You know, even when he knew about, I mean, I totally understand your concerns and the administrative concerns on that. But there are other communities, I mean, I think Pembroke has just brought their K through four back this week, or K through two. I forgot what the grades were. But the very least, I think the administration should have.
There's actually a survey that went around from Abbott to have social superintendents. And not, not one superintendent said they were in the process of planning on returning more kids to school in the near future. In terms of going full in person, there were some discussions about maybe trying to bring in some more special ed students, which I actually feel like we're bringing in a lot of special ed students, having more students go three or four days a week. Now, that wasn't every school in the South Shore. I honestly don't know what Pembroke's doing. They may be bringing more kids back in. But the student, that's, you know, I'm in that constant communication. There actually was a survey today specifically on this issue. And they said at this time, no one was planning on making a transition from those who responded, which was probably 10 to 15 South Shore superintendents. As I said, some South Shore schools, districts have gone remote. They've gone remote based on the, the case counted within their current community. Which ours is zero, which I just said, we have not had a new case in two weeks.
That's right. I mean, we talk, I mean, I don't want anyone to get sick, obviously, but like as Jen and James said, we do have, you know, younger kids feeling the effects of this and of not being in school and families are having a hard time with that.
And I don't want to diminish that because I, I think I've been very clear in saying that I don't disagree with, this is really tough. It's, it is not the optimal situation. And it's, this all becomes about balancing what is the optimal education situation, which is all students, which is all students full in person. 100% believe the best and optimal educational situation is all students full in person. But it's balancing that with the current state of the pandemic within Southeast of Massachusetts, within the Carver community and, and mitigating that risk. And people have real concerns right now about going to the three feet of social distancing. Ultimately, to go full in person in K one and two, we have to commit to three feet of social distancing and not six. And, and the staff has legitimate, has, I guess, real concerns about that. And I think we have to balance that out with the community concerns. We had, and they say, I know, I understand it's frustrating to people because this conversation becomes repetitive. It's in essence, the same conversation we just had two weeks ago. But I don't know, I don't know how much, I don't know how things have changed since two weeks ago. If anything, in Massachusetts, there's been an increase in cases.
So in the last survey we did, there was what? What was the percentage of parents that wanted to see the kids, the kids back?
Between 70 and 80% were saying that they could, that they would support the three feet of social distancing and, and be supportive of them. The question was, we laid out the health and safety requirements and said, would you be willing to have your student, how comfortable would you be with your students returning full in person following these safety requirements? And it was between 70, 80% said totally comfortable or uncomfortable. And the staff survey was the opposite. The staff survey said, you know, it was about 75% uncomfortable. And then specifically our K one and two teachers were 80% saying they were uncomfortable with having students return following those safety guidelines.
Let me ask you another question. When we vote, we've had this discussion before, when and if we vote to bring the K through two back, is the administration ready and taking steps to be ready when we take that vote?
Yes.
All right. That's good. So we're all set in that, in that area. So it just comes to a point of, we have to represent the community and someone has to make a motion to do, to do just that. And if we can either vote yes or no at this time or another time, but that's our, those are our options. We've already done the survey. You know, we can do another survey, as James said, you know, but we already had the will, we already asked the people, the will of the parents and the teachers. We already have the info as far as I know. Does anybody else have anything? I, I myself would vote to have the kids back, at least K through two back in school right now with the cases in Carver. Because I understand that some kids and teachers come from other towns. But we always talk about, especially with money and budgets and things like that, that we have to do what's right for Carver. And I think this is the same. But that's just my two cents. Does anybody else have anything on this they'd like to add? Okay, seeing none. Sorry, Steph. Go ahead.
No, that's fine. I, I also want to see the kids back in school. I'm just not convinced that now is the right time. When is going to be the right time? I don't know. Is there going to be a perfect time right now? Probably not. Because so much is unknown. I don't think it would hurt, however. Scott, have you looked at, with, have you looked at the calendar at all to see when might fit with time off? And in terms of where the kids are in the term, where it might be a good, a good target, you know, period?
Not in terms of the term per se. I can only say we have, we, the administrative team did not have a specific discussion this week in regards to setting a date for, for students to return. I just felt where we are with the pandemic that we were not going to make that recommendation at this time. Certainly if the committee asked me to look at a date tonight, I could do that.
Right. I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I know what that date is. I'm just wondering if it would make sense for us to try to transition back in before the end of the year? Or if it's something that we should look at after the first of the year, after the, after the breaks are over? Because if we're, you're going to need a two-week, we're going to need two weeks to prepare just to switch models, correct?
Yes, that was the last time we said two weeks.
So, so I'm just thinking in terms of, of dates that we're getting into.
That would get us very close to Thanksgiving, yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Recommendation for after Thanksgiving or, and then the question of, do you want to do that in December?
Right. Right. I mean, I mean, I think, you know, my, my personal feelings, I think we're going to see a lot, unfortunately, an increase in cases after Thanksgiving. I hope that's not the case, but that's, you know, where I see things going. So it's just hard for, I know, I know it's hard for everyone, but I just wasn't sure if there were any discussions overlooking at the calendar and saying, okay, if we were to try to, to move forward, you know, what makes sense facilities-wise, for staff-wise, timing-wise, all, all those things. So that would be something that I think might be helpful to us at, at some point to get some feedback about, you know, where in terms of that, from the building perspective, where it might be a good date. I know James just raised his hand.
I'm just saying we're meeting again in two weeks, right?
Yep.
In two weeks, if things, if things are not changing, if our numbers stay the same, if there's not a dramatic difference, I'm very willing to make a, a, a motion next meeting. To, to start to set a plan and. to start to set a plan and a date, because if things are not going to change, I understand the reluctance right now, and I feel reluctant to make a motion, because I don't think like, I don't feel like you really want it, and I, and I understand why, I'm not saying that in a negative sense at all, I completely understand why. But I also think that if, if we're going to continue and things aren't going to necessarily reflect worse right now, then I think we need to make this more realistic, because I truly am concerned for what's happening in early education, and I would love for somebody to convince me otherwise, I, please, try to. But I, I just don't feel like, knowing everything that I've heard from everybody, understanding this field, I just don't know how you're succeeding with what you need to at those levels, and I, and I get that it's a transition, there's adjustments, the safety is, is the biggest reason why I'm only not making a motion tonight, because I would rather it be a little more cooperative, I guess, than, than feeling like it's pressured, but I, I will say that if things, data is not changing very different than it is right now, I am not reluctant to make a motion at our next meeting.
Thank you, James. Jen?
Yeah, I agree, and, you know, I'm, I'm reluctant, I, I came in tonight, like, on the fence on whether I'd make a motion tonight. This really needs to happen, we need to get the plans in place and be prepared to go. I wonder, from an administration standpoint, we keep talking K through 2, it might be more work, but it might be better, and it might, the teachers might feel better too, what if we staggered bringing, instead of bringing all three grades back in all at once, what if we staggered it? And, and said, okay, we're going to start kindergarten, and then first, and then second, just so it wasn't as many at once. I'm curious to know what people think about that, and if that makes it better or worse.
Yeah, I get that. I, I know initial feedback would actually be, I think kindergarten people would actually select to be the last grade to come back. Alter, in, in that rotation, that they would go first grade first, probably, then second thing kindergarten. Remember, the kindergarten, not very long ago, was half-day, kindergarten's not a required grade level. You know, so right now, when we, when we talk about enrollment data in a little bit, I'm going to say we, we had about, you know, 25 to 30 less kindergarten enrollments than we usually have, because people have opted to keep their kids home, because they don't have to attend in kindergarten. And I know we've had some initial discussions about this, because we've talked about phasing a little bit, and the thought was that maybe kindergarten would actually be the last to come back, just based on those concepts of, it's actually, as I said, it's not required, you can opt out, you can just start in first grade, and that that, not, not lying, obviously, there's full-day kindergarten for a reason. And, you know, and there's purpose behind that, and everybody, and we as a district, we're a huge supporter of full-day kindergarten, and we were one of the first districts in this area to go completely full-day kindergarten. If you remember, not long ago, a lot of our School Choice kids used to come from Plymouth, because Plymouth wasn't full-day kindergarten, and that's why we opened up School Choice and kindergarten, was some of those Plymouth kids would come in and they'd go back in the first grade, because we had full-day kindergartens. This district is, long-term, a full, a huge supporter of that. But I do think that, you know, if there was some kind of a phase in, and I'd have to go back and talk to the elementary admin, I don't want to speak for them, we've had, like I said, we've had some preliminary discussions about that, and as I said, I think the recommendation would actually probably be maybe for kindergarten to be the last grade to return. If we were going to phase it.
Okay, anybody else?
So I just want to make sure that I have the direction, from baseless conversation, I think you're asking me to, next time, come with a recommendation of a date.
I think, well, that's what Stephanie was mentioning.
To make the transition in two weeks, you know, in essence, you know, two Mondays from our meeting, so if we meet on Thursday, it would be two Mondays out from that, that would give us two weeks and two days, two weeks and a day for, to plan the transition back in, and we have the wheels in motion to begin to do that. That may not be our recommendation, so when we come in two weeks, that may not be the administration's recommendation, you know, they might say, we're going to recommend after January 1st, and then the committee can obviously do something totally different than that, and vote a different date. So what we're telling you is we need at least the two, two weeks in a day from the time of the vote.
The conditions could be totally different in two weeks, you know, hopefully they will still be low, but, okay.
And, and you're actually looking at Thanksgiving, we'd probably need more time than, being on, very, very direct, because we're not here for three days of Thanksgiving. So we'd probably, you know, a recommendation on the 19th, realistically, would probably be looking like December 14th or something like that is the earliest, because that's three weeks, because of the Thanksgiving break in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, in all seriousness, that whatever planning needs to start happening, like, we need to, in our minds, consider that this is, this is, you know, a very real possibility, and so if there's things that can be, start being done now, even before we vote, I think it would be great if those could get going, and I think the December, I was looking at like.
The biggest challenge is, and I don't think, I just don't think we should do it early, is asking parents to commit. I don't think we should ask people to commit until the vote's actually made. Because that's the biggest process, is the day after the vote's made, that next day, I have to send out to the parents and give them whatever, four or five days, okay, we're really doing this, we're starting on whatever date, we're starting on December 7th, we're starting on December 14th, we're starting on January 4th, whatever the date is that you vote, here's the day we're starting, are you going full remote? Because remember, we did have an additional 15% say they're going to go full remote if you vote full in person. And I think that number's going to be larger, quite honestly, based on how things have trended within the state over the last couple of weeks. I could be wrong about that, but the survey said at least, you know, there was going to be an increase in those families who are voting to go remote, and then that, that's the planning we have to do, because then we have to look at the numbers, you have to figure out who the remote kids are, we have to figure out how we're going to reorganize the classes, and have, you know, what kids are going to be moved, because remember, students are going to be moving and having different teachers. So that, the key data there is getting that commitment from parents, whether they're going to go full in person, or whether they're going to go remote. And then, you know, we, we know, we know who the teachers are going to be, so we know who's going to teach in each grade level. We know what staff moves are going to make, transportation's already working on the bus routes, so like, that, that backend stuff is happening, but we need the two weeks, because we need to get the commitment from the parents, and then see what the numbers are, because maybe we have to have two, and we had this whole conversation the last time, and James, I gave it, I think I threw out a number of 30, which, and the number of 30 was wrong about kids in remote classes, but, you know, we might, we might have to make that decision, okay, we have 30 kids who are remote, we have to break that to 215s. And we just need that planning time to make all that transition, we need that two weeks in a day. And so, know the backend planning's happening, but the biggest piece is getting the commitment of what families are going to do once the vote's made.
I think that's a good reminder to the committee and the community of why the two weeks are necessary, and why you just can't do it tomorrow, you know?
Yeah. You can't vote today and say, okay, well, everybody's going to come back in on Monday.
Right.
And you know that, I think everybody knows that, acknowledges that.
Well, it's good for people that might not watch meetings all the time, or, or, you know, so. Okay, anyone else before we move on?
So I, I will come back to the next meeting with a date, that's what I'm taking as the charge of this discussion, is that.
Yeah, well, I mean, recommended date was, Stephanie, is that what you wanted?
Well, I was just thinking, like, so, so say, so say, you know, if you were to, if, if everything were to align, everything were to, were to go well between now and our next meeting, if numbers are trending in the right direction, and if getting in before Thanksgiving, clearly that wouldn't happen, would it make sense at that point to say December 14th would be a date? How many days would the kids actually have in school before Christmas break? Like, that's what, you know what I mean, like, I'm thinking, that's what I'm trying to get at, is like, is the.
Makes sense to go with January.
Yeah, is, is, does, I, I want the feedback from the people that are the boots on the ground, that are actually, you know.
What is determined, maybe it makes a transition, a position on the term.
That, that, that was really my, my, because I don't know the answers to all those questions. So I just feel like, you know.
And also, I think we can also, Jen talked about the phasing piece, we can take a look at the phasing piece, and whether that would be a recommendation or not.
So it sounds like we need, oh, go ahead, Jen.
So I was just going to say, I've been thinking about what you were saying about kindergarten, Scott, and you were, you know, talking about how like kindergarten, you know, isn't required, and, you know, I wonder, you know, a big piece of the full-day kindergarten was to do a lot of like, socialization things that aren't necessarily happening right now. And I'm going to throw you a super curveball right now, but has anyone discussed, would it make sense for kindergarten to go back to half-days? So then we could have them four days a week, but it would still be lower numbers if we split them into half-days?
I actually talk about that a lot. So that, that is definitely something that's been discussed. It becomes a little bit of a transportation issue, that's become more challenging for transportation, because now you're doing two half-day kindergartens for the morning and afternoon session, and all the transportation that goes along with that, that might take a little more planning, but it's definitely been, because Jen, you're actually 100% right on, that the kindergarten piece was really bait, the full-day kindergarten, some of that was based on socialization, and that, you know, we've had some discussions with the kindergarten teachers, and, and it might be something that they recommend or support in terms of going to half-day A cohort, B cohort, you know, that I think, I don't know, I would think, we might have to give the parents some opportunity to weigh in on that, because I'll weigh in in terms of whether they want to be morning or afternoon, which could be a little tricky too, because I know, I know, once we force people, you're, you're the afternoon cohort, we're going to get a lot of parents saying, well, the afternoon cohort doesn't work for me. So, and then we might just have to say, that's what we're doing. And, you know, to the best of our ability, we'll try to put you in the, because then you're mixing the cohorts again, you're like almost redesigning the whole kindergarten, which you could do, you could, you just need a little time to do that.
Yes, I just.
Definitely has been discussed, actually, we've had a lot of discussion on that topic.
Does that satisfy your question, Jen?
It does, thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like we need more than a date, Scott, for next meeting.
Well, it could be a date, it could be a date and a recommended plan.
That's what I mean, you have several things going on here. Okay, so why don't we move on if no one else has anything? So we'll look forward to that in our next meeting. So we'll move on to item D, hybrid model overview.
If you give me a second, I have to promote Ruby to a analyst.
Analyst first class. Promoted.
I'll do Mike Schultz as well, in here doing it.
Good evening, everyone.
Give you one second, and I'll let you turn your video on. So Ruby, you should be able to turn your video on.
Yes, I can.
Great, and I will pull up the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening again, how's everyone doing this evening? I just wanted to start by saying thank you so much for all of the dialogue, this certainly isn't easy, it isn't easy to have this, these discussions. I will say, at the elementary school, we've been talking a lot about various scenarios and situations, and absolutely, we do want to have the kids back, it's, it's just all of these other variables that we have to consider, and we, and we are considering. And so I know as a school committee that you all are receiving lots of information, lots of feedback, lots of requests from our community, and I just want to say again, we know we have a huge task ahead of us. I knew in March, when we, when we were, when we stayed home, I knew that, that was the easy part, that figuring out a way to return to school full in person was going to be one of the biggest challenges and biggest undertakings. And I can tell that the entire COVID community is working really hard to, to do this in the best way possible, so I want to thank you. And so, I'm going to go into our hybrid learning model, this is what we're currently doing now at the elementary school, give you an overview of that, and help folks to have a little bit better of an understanding of, of our hybrid learning model currently. And so, Scott, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So as you all know, this is currently what we're, we're working on, this is our remote learning model, we have the students in school two days a week, and they have three days at home. So, currently, what is taking place at the, at the elementary school, students have core instruction when they are in school, Wednesday is the full remote days, they have live lessons with their classroom teachers, students have special every day, it's in-person when they're, when they are in school, and it's an asynchronous lesson when it's, when they are remote. Students do receive live instruction and teacher connection on the two days that they are home, and this is to support the core instruction. Remote learning instruction is both combination of synchronous and asynchronous lessons for all of our children. So, just to focus more specifically on the, the hybrid at-home piece, so the role of the hybrid teacher is really to collaborate with the grade-level teachers and all of the other staff to implement the frameworks on the children's at-home learning days. So all of our hybrid teachers are working with multiple staff, not just the staff on their grade level, but support staff, whether it's our EL teacher, whether it's our special education teacher, therapists, counselors, just multiple folks to ensure that they are, are doing the best job they can to teach remotely to deliver the frameworks. And so, we definitely know that flexibility is key in order to meet all of the various needs and the, and the learning styles of our students. So I wanted to start by just going over a typical at-home learning day in kindergarten. So, the children log on to Google Classroom for a morning message, this is about 15 minutes, and this basically is a message of the day and a lesson overview, and the message of the day could be a focus on a concept, discussion on maybe, for example, in the fall, talking about harvesting, or talking about Thanksgiving, or even election, giving students some background on, you know, voting, and they do it with things that they like, like, you know, voting for apples versus pumpkins, that sort of thing. So that's how they build on those concepts and help to build background. So our kindergarten hybrid remote teacher is working on this. There are two teacher-led lessons between 30 to 35 minutes, there's a literacy lesson each day, and a math lesson as well. We do have one of our educational support paraprofessionals who is working with our remote hybrid teacher, and actually, the paraprofessional, this particular paraprofessional works also with our remote kindergarten teacher, so they, they, she kind of toggles back and forth, working with both of those teachers. And we also have a high school intern who is supporting our hybrid remote learning teacher with some of these lessons. So students have received individual at-home math kits, there are two independent learning blocks per day, these activities reinforce previously taught skills and concepts, the concepts have been taught in school, there are packets that are sent home ahead of time, and all of these packets include literacy, writing, reading, and math activity. There are also choice boards, which are lessons that are off the screen, they are incorporated into their, their, their at-home learning days. These are lessons that provide enrichment, lessons that provide some, like I said already, opportunities for the students to be off the screen. The asynchronous specials are assigned, so these are previously pre-recorded lessons from our specialists, and then snacks, breaks, recess, and lunch are incorporated into the at-home learning day. And then, the hybrid teacher has met with all of our students on, on their in-person days, and this helps to build that relationship over time. So what our hybrid learning teacher does is, she goes in and she connects with the kids while they're in school, just a few minutes here and there, just to, to see them face-to-face. And then, I did, if you can click on the, the link, Scott, to see if we can show all of our viewers a typical schedule from Mrs. Sexton. Schedule from Mrs. Sexton. So this is an example of, of what the student's schedule looks like. So they're working on literacy, they're working on math and their exploration, and then their special. And then, you know, so here are the directions and. Additional information. So I wanted folks just to have a look of what we were talking about so we can help this sort of come to life for you. So then I wanted to go over with you all a typical at-home learning day in grades three through five. So again, we talked about morning meeting already. With kindergarten, all of our classes do this. This is an opportunity to build connection and opportunity for students and teachers to get to know each other. There are two teacher-led instructional blocks. These instructional blocks are between 40 and 60 minutes. There are also between two and three independent learning blocks per day. And the reason that there are two instructional blocks per day. Is because the teachers have approximately, well, in kindergarten, we're gonna go over a couple of slides in a few minutes. But in kindergarten, there are about 41 children. On their at-home learning days for group A, and again, another 40 children for group B. So the teacher basically has to divide them up into smaller groups to be able to support them in a way that's a bit more effective. So. That's why there, there are two teacher-led instructional blocks on those hybrid remote days. Again, breaks and lunch are incorporated into the schedule and I wanted you to have a peek at a grade four typical schedule.
Wait a sec. I'll see if I can get that.
So.
Thank you.
So this is what the, this is what the children will see and this is what their families will see. This is the, this is the morning meeting. This is group A. So, so group A is approximately, in this particular grade, this is approximately. Eighteen, eighteen to twenty students that are working on independent work. The other eighteen are attending or participating in their special and the other eighteen are working on their instructional block. And this is a live lesson with the teacher. So, so group C has their live lesson here with Miss Caleb. And then down here in the bottom with Mrs. Caleb, group C in the red. And so because the teachers really do have to break these into smaller groups, that, that instructional time is less than what. Families would have noticed on those full remote days when we first started in September. Does that sort of make sense? So in this particular grade, Mrs. Caleb is working with the students also on enrichments activities. She's doing some reading enrichment with students, spelling, independent work. You'll see the focus for the hybrid teachers in fourth grade is science or social studies and math. So I wanted to share with you a little bit of information about our, our numbers. So the folks have an idea of, of. Class sizes. So kindergarten, right now we have a hundred students in person and sixteen of them are full remote. So we have one teacher who is teaching the, the remote students. We have four in-person teachers and their class size ranges from twenty to twenty-two. And these numbers have been a bit fluid because what, what is happening is parents are realizing on, you know, in some situations. That they prefer to have their child, they, they've tried the hybrid and they feel like maybe for some reason, they prefer the full remote and vice versa. So these numbers have been fluid since the start of school. And then at each grade level, we have the, the hybrid component, the remote teacher. So kindergarten has one hybrid teacher and as I had mentioned earlier, group A has forty-one students. So on their at-home learning days, the kindergarten teacher is working with forty-one students. And again, one of the things I really wanted to emphasize here is all of the, the teachers that are hybrid remote teachers. They, they basically, they've been reassigned. These teachers, I've been having conversations with them since July. Talking to them about all of the possible options and the possible changes that. Could potentially happen as we prepare for a start in school. And I just want to make sure everyone here knows, every single teacher said to me. We will do whatever it takes. We, we know that we have to be reassigned. Some of these teachers were reading teachers, some of them. Are, in this case, Mrs. Sexton was an in-person teacher and she. Said, I will do it. I will do whatever is needed. I will make that change. So I just want to make sure everyone knows that all of the hybrid teachers have been reassigned and they're really working on a model that started. In a discussion at one of our committee meetings back in July and that whole model has, has evolved. And it's staffing wise, we definitely had to adjust. And I know I've had parents ask me, well, why don't you have more hybrid remote teachers? That's just too large of a class size. And basically what we've had to do is we have. Had to reassign and work with the numbers we have. We, we don't have the opportunity or the luxury to hire more staff.
Ruby, please tell your staff members that we appreciate their dedication for sure.
Want to point out, I just reinforced that concept of they're not necessarily working with the class of forty-one all at the same time. That's the whole concept of the schedule. They break in in the small groups throughout the day. That's why the students don't have a full day of live instruction.
Right. So then as you continue to look, grade one or numbers are a hundred and six. So we have the hybrid teacher who's working with a larger group here, about fifty-six students for group A and fifty for group B. The class size range again here is twenty and we have the full remote teacher is working with twenty students. And so I wanted to make sure that I included these numbers because the last time we, at the school committee, their meeting, there was some discussion about. That full remote class size and, and been concerned of, you know, well, what number is just too big? Because that, that, that could potentially get. To that point real soon here, especially in grade three. So right now, grade three is our largest full remote class size with twenty-four students. And so I did want to take a look here at grade three. Because we have two remote hybrid teachers, but, but really they're, they're each functioning as point five. So I have one. One teacher who is working. Part-time as an instructional coach, the other time as a hybrid teacher. So it's basically our instruction, our math coach and our reading coach. Both of them have been reassigned to help to teach the curriculum for the, the third grade team here. So those teachers are working. Both to train teachers, coach teachers with math and reading, but they're also working with all of the third grade team and all of the other support staff. To meet the needs of the students on those remote learning days. So then I'll look at the, I wanted to look a little bit more at the at-home lessons. Wanted to make sure everyone knows that the lessons are aligned with our curriculum. They are program-based. They all follow a scope and sequence and that's the work that the teachers are doing to ensure that the, the lessons have. Some sense of order and are built on previously taught skills. There are daily lessons in kindergarten, grades one and two. The teachers are teaching equi lessons. They're teaching them remotely. And these lessons are really, in the early grades, they are teaching the children how to read. So it's learning their letters or the sounds and blends, et cetera. And then math lessons are also taking place daily at K one and two remotely. We're using Scott Forsman and Bridges. And Wednesdays, the hybrid teachers are preparing packets. They're prepping other materials. They're making video recordings. They're meeting with students for math or they're reading a lesson. They're building background for upcoming reading concepts. So there's a combination of things that they're doing on Wednesdays. And grade three through five, I have some examples of, of some of the independent work that the teachers are doing. That's okay Scott, we can. I thought I had shared it with you, I'm sorry. But basically, Mrs. Kelly and Mrs. Moore are the grade three hybrid remote teachers. And this, this example of independent work is actually a fabulous example of the work that they're doing. They have some pre-recorded lessons where they. On a PowerPoint where they have gone through every single concept and, and every single. And directions are very explicit and it's pre-recorded so that students can listen to it over and over again if they get stuck. So it's very, it's guided instruction for the students, but it also helps to explain their independent work. The teachers will explain it for them. But then they'll, children have the opportunity to go back and look at it again and listen and, and follow along if they get stuck. So in grade three, the live instruction is more focused on math and social studies. In grade four, as I had mentioned earlier, the focus is on science, social studies, science or social studies and math. And I had shared that grade four video with you earlier. That's the same one we looked at. In grade five, the students have social studies in the morning on their at-home learned, learning days. And the afternoon focuses on assistance, reteaching of, of lessons and support for all areas of their subject area work. Students are supported with class assignments and all other subjects. That's basically the same thing. I'm sorry about that. But there's another live meeting to review directions, to go over assignments and to review additional questions. But again, I just wanted to emphasize that the teachers are all planning these things. They're, these, these teachers are certified teachers. They're planning lessons, they're developing things. Using document cameras and all of the, using all of the technology that they've been learning to use over the course of the last several years. And then implementing lessons remotely. In terms of the grade level communication, they use curriculum planning guides. They meet weekly to plan lessons. Some of the grade levels will use a shared Google document, just to give you a little example. To ensure that all teachers know what each of the students are learning from one day to the next. They consult individually regarding specific student needs. They review, discuss observational notes, information just regarding student progress. And they are co-teachers on Google classrooms and they all have access to each other's classroom teacher assignments. And then how did the special education liaisons fit into all of this? So they collaborate and consult with the grade level teachers, the, the therapist, the EL teachers, the, around student needs and, and the hybrid teachers as well. So they're all working together. The, the special education liaison both teach groups in person and remotely. So they, they will work with the students on all four of their, their, their school days, whether the students are at home or in school. There are, in some cases, we have two or three educational support paraprofessionals as well as. Special ed teachers who are doing this both in person and remotely. They're reviewing and modifying assignments as needed. They are sending home alternative work choices for students. A lot of these students receive paper pencil assignments ahead of time. They are also posting alternative assignments on Google Classroom. They plan lessons using Lexia. For example, they create assignments on things like epic, epic books for the kids. They're sending home individual checklists to support the hybrid instruction, editing kind of checklists. Just guides for students. They, for some writing tasks, they provide things like graphic organizers and other editing tools. They also are doing a lot of online conferencing with the students to provide them with support and help them while they're at home. And they're sending home manipulatives and other tools that they might need. It's very common in the younger grades for students to have things like. Uniform cubes and other manipulatives at home so that they can do the best job they can on their at-home learning days. One of the things I also did want to mention is Mrs. Foley did. Somewhat of a shadow of student at. On one of their at-home learning days. And so she took some notes. She attended all of the classes, the remote learning, the hybrid remote learning teacher is Mrs. Spina. And she was teaching the students how to choose to, it was math computational skills. And. The students were engaged. Mrs. Foley was extremely impressed with the work that Mrs. Spina did, basically to do the best job she could. With the students to teach them. Math lessons, specifically number corner, which is a lot of computational math skills. And I think that that might be the last slide. Okay, so I wanted to tell you a little bit about GoGuardian. So what is it? It's a video, video conferencing tool that allows teachers to manage digital classrooms. And there's the student screens and it helps them to redirect the students back to task. So for example, a teacher will be set up on her or his computer, have GoGuardian set up. And have a group of students on Google Classroom, let's just say sixteen or twenty students. And the teacher is able to chat with the students individually, manage the settings on the students' Chromebooks. And, and help them to redirect them. If a student, for example, is. Off-task or maybe has logged onto another site, let's just say watching something on YouTube. The teacher is able to see that that's the case and just send the child a private chat and say, alright, come on back with me. Turn YouTube off. So it's been a useful tool that. Especially the grades three through five teachers are using. But in order for this to work, students must be logged onto their Chromebook. For it to work. It's the, the school Chromebook, school issued Chromebook. So again, teachers can even use this to monitor how much time students spend on, on websites or other activities during the school day. And it does provide a lengthy report of all of the activity and it's just a helpful tool. Again, just to help to problem solve and support students. And that is it.
Alright, does anybody have any questions for Ruby or comments? Jen?
Hi Ruby, thank you so much for that presentation. One of the things that had come up during our planning phases is that, you know, we all discussed that we were concerned. With the ability to move through the curriculum at the pace with the kids only being in school two days a week. I know math assessments are happening, you know, right now to kind of gauge where the kids are. But I'm just curious if you've had that discussion with your teachers, you know, maybe that remote teacher versus, you know, the. Teachers that are doing the hybrid model. Are they, are they in the same place curriculum-wise? Or is the hybrid classes moving through the curriculum slower? Do we think that we could have a significant issue throughout the year of maybe falling behind in curriculum? I'm just curious.
I did talk with third grade about this specifically. We met last week and the, what the, the full remote teacher was explaining. That at this point right now, they're not that, they're, they're pretty much on the same page. They haven't advanced. We did think that that could potentially happen, but we haven't seen that happen just yet. There is, you're right, there is a concern that, that, that that could happen in some of the grades. And just, there's just so many variables to consider with that, but um, at this point, we haven't seen it.
Okay, anybody else? Stephanie? Go ahead.
Sorry, my computer's screen flipped. Ruby, I just wanted to say thank you for, for putting that together and for taking the time to go through it. I know that this is not, you know, the ideal learning situation, but I hope that this gives members of the community a little bit. but I hope that this gives members of the community a little bit more insight. Because I know that as a parent, you may not think that a task that child is doing is really learning or really helping them in some way. But I have faith, you know, that when it was put together and designed and given to the children, that it's doing exactly that. Just probably not, it might not look that way. Because, you know, parents haven't necessarily seen what kids are always doing in the classroom, what the interaction is and how some types of learning happen. So I just wanted to say thank you for breaking that down into the detail that you did. And I mean, for, for all of your efforts, it's greatly appreciated. So thank you and please, you know, take, I think everyone would say thank you to your team, back to everyone for their efforts and their commitment, so. Say thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, yeah Ruby, I also would like to thank you for your presentations, very informative. I have two questions actually. Have you had many parents reach out to you about difficulties that children are having or their teachers? And what would be if a family is having, does have a student that's having an issue? Would they contact the teacher first, would they contact you first or?
Those are good questions. So we absolutely want the families to contact the teacher, that we want them to use that process that we've used in the past. The, the first step is connect with the teacher, try to do your best to articulate what is happening, what are the concerns that you're seeing and have some of that dialogue with the classroom teacher. One of the things that I do want to point out is we have, yes, I have had a number of calls, I mean, I wouldn't say that I've had more than two dozen calls Andy, but I've had about, about that number where parents have been concerned and have been very supportive, complimentary, but concerned and, and really needing help and asking for, you know, some advice and what to do. And I think the biggest thing that parents are seeing are that the kids are off-task or don't seem to be that engaged. And that is actually very typical, we're not going to see kids as engaged on video. And it's just a different medium for learning and it's just not, it's not the, it's not the norm. So one of the things we want parents to know is that, that yes, even in person, we kids, we see kids off-task and it's very common for us to see that as educators. And we often will, we're in the, in the live situation, we're able to redirect kids in a different way. We're able to sometimes stop what we're doing, take a motor break. We have lots of different ways to refocus the kids. So, but we also, I also want to say that just because the kids are, are off-task or seem to be less focused, they are still learning, they might not be learning at the rate that we'd like them to and in this situation, but there is still some learning going on. And when the children are in school, what we are seeing from, from them is that they are completing assignments, they are conversing with us, they are having some good conversations. Their, their vocabulary is increasing, their skills with the computer and technology are increasing. And we're, we are seeing a lot of that from many of the students. So, but yes, we want parents to reach out to the classroom teacher, work through some of those challenges with the teacher and certainly reach out to me, available to help as well and to make those connections and help to support the teachers.
Great, okay, my second question is actually, has three parts. They all deal with things we talked about before we voted in the model here. One was, one would be how are you handing, how are you handling lunches? How are you handling mask breaks and how are you handling snack breaks?
Sure, so we're handling mask breaks, let's start with that. We started them off every hour, that really hasn't changed. Students are able to, they'll ask for a mask break. I was in classrooms today where students, you know, were asked for a mask break. And if it was, in some cases, we were able to give all of the kids a mask break at the same time. In some cases, just have a student just take a, a quick mask break on their own. But today was a little bit different because we were working with the math assessment and, and having kids take that today. So mask breaks continue every hour. The snack breaks, every, every grade level has a snack. And in most cases, snacks are outside because the weather has been good. And a lot of cases, when they're in the classroom, they take a snack break and a mask break at the same time. Those breaks are all happening because we are in this hybrid model. We have the, the desks six feet apart, so mask breaks and snack breaks are happening in that fashion. Lunches are happening in the cafeteria, all of our grade levels have lunch in the cafeteria. Students have a thirty-minute lunch, just like they have in the past. The students have been handling lunch really well and masks and, and following directions. We have one-way traffic going in, one-way traffic going in to get their lunch. Traffic comes out, they, the students are six feet apart. I, I have to say, I have nothing but compliments for the kids. They've been extremely well-mannered, happy to be in school, following directions, asking good questions, participating in, in the things that we do have taking place. And just overall amazing. I, I'm extremely proud of the kids and the work that they've done. And the parents, because the parents have been working with them all of these, all of these months. Does that answer your question about snack breaks?
I want to echo Ruby's response, that, that's really, that's district-wide. I think it's great in terms of responding to the protocols. Kids are challenging protocols or procedures, you know, it's the, the kids, the parents, everyone's really been outstanding in terms of those pieces.
That's great feedback. Yes Ruby, that definitely answers my questions, thank you very much for, for giving those to me. All right, anybody else for Ruby? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much Ruby, I really appreciate it. I'm sure we all appreciate your very thorough presentations as usual.
Thanks Ruby.
You're welcome.
All right, next we have Mike for middle high school.
Mike, just give me a second.
Mr. Schultz, I should say, is being official.
Hello.
Hello.
You guys hear me?
We can.
Okay. My video is not all, there we go. So before we get into the hybrid thing, I just wanted to mention two quick things. For me personally, it, it took a little while to, to start to feel like school again. I mean, we spent a lot of time going over protocols and sort of teaching the kids the, the new, the new norm. And I would echo what Ms. Neef and Ruby said. The kids have been fantastic. But the other thing that I noticed, one of the things I started last year was I tried to find at least once a month where I met with members of all the contributors of the things we do in our district. I mean, that's tech, transportation, food services, maintenance, custodial, teachers, ESPs, nurses, admin, central office. And it, and I have to say, and I didn't want to miss this opportunity, it's amazing how each one of those groups have come together and done something different or had to contribute something that made sort of our work easier and the operations that we do easier. So it has been, we always, I've always believed that education's teamwork and everybody's as valuable as the bus drivers and custodians and the teachers all contribute to this. But it really has shown at the start of this year and what we're doing now. So I just want to thank that whole group and just acknowledge that. And the other thing I just want to say before I jump into the presentation is people are just being really creative. Those, anybody had an opportunity to see what I've been calling on Twitter, concert in the park with a pausing lot. We had a concert today in the parking lot. It was fantastic, I want to thank Gillian Griffin. She put together a quick half-hour concert for the kids in the community. Six through twelve singing, being outside, a mini, a mini concert, it was great. So I just, I just want to thank everybody for the work they're doing all the way through the district for our students. It's been amazing.
Terrific.
So.
Get out of Ruby's presentation, give me half a second, I'm like.
Okay, I thought you, that was what you were going to be doing when I was giving my little.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, yes, we didn't rehearse that well, I'm sorry.
You dropped the ball on that one.
Well, transitions, transitions.
Yes. So ultimately, you guys, you know our program, what we, what we created. We started with this concept of hybrid coaches. You know, and ultimately in the remote, in the hybrid model, we've tried to balance both cohorts, cohort A, cohort B. And for the most part, in the beginning, it was, it was a little off, but I think for the most part, as you look at the school and the lunches and the sort of the flow of the building, the students are into the, into the system that we've created, they're pretty balanced off. And we've created this hybrid coach plan. And again, these are the people that are doing it, it's on the website. And we've had a couple of changes to this and we've had some modifications, but I can speak a little bit about the system as we go through the slideshow and some of the things we've learned and some of the things we've changed. So really, the at-home remote learning days, we really wanted to make sure that the students at home were following a schedule. Ultimately, their school day starts at seven forty and there's an expectation that whether they're in the six-seven schedule or the eight-twelve schedule that they are accounted for and they're reporting to classes. And we created the, the system of, of ways in which we can account for the students and make sure that the work is being completed and on task. These four, these five things here are Google Form. So in some cases, teachers are using a Google Form where they are required to report out on the work that they've done, almost like a journal. Some teachers are using a virtual notebook, this was a concept that was put together by some of our science teachers. And the virtual notebook takes a tremendous amount of work, but basically it's spelling out, it's kind of like a journal, but it spells out a series of activities that are going on in real time. The teachers can go into Google Classroom and check their progress as they go each day. Sometimes students are just required to do a, a passage, watch a video, do some instruction and then complete an assignment. Again, all of these things are done at the conclusion of the period. So if I have, if I am in a block scheduled and I'm going from seven forty to nine-ten, the expectation to make me accountable during that period of time is to turn in something that is timely and will be, will be graded. That's how we keep track of their attendance and that's how we give credit for our, our high school kids for each, each day. There are two other options that are more virtual, one is a virtual check-in. So in some cases, teachers are using a virtual check-in for students. It's really a virtual attendance, it's five minutes. Sometimes they will participate in some of the basic instructions of the day. And in some cases, teachers will spend ten minutes addressing both students and that are in person and at home. And then they allow them to stay on and ask questions if they need to. It's not really a virtual lesson, but it is a virtual check-in. And then finally, something that we've been continuing to work on and develop, and I have some more information about this later in the presentation, which is our, our live stream lessons. So again, the teachers have a choice in how they're going to do this. And, and, and for the most part, it is going well. I think our attendance is pretty stable in terms of how we're reporting out on virtual days. And, you know, feedback from teachers is that basically students are checking in, following a schedule and we're accounting for them on a period-by-period basis. So the hybrid coach, the list of people that we presented earlier are our hybrid coaches. Some of them are doing double duty, so that means they might be a point-five teacher for us. And the other periods, they're doing hybrid coaching. Some of them are retired teachers that have worked for us in the past. And some people are ESPs that have transitioned into the, the role of the hybrid coach. But ultimately, Joe, their job is to, to support students during the off-days. In some cases, students are checking in with them through virtual Zoom meetings. Sometimes it's just an email check-in, sometimes it's just locating the work for the day. But ultimately, they're providing support for students at home. And this process, I will be honest, took a little bit of time because students need to make that connection like anything in education. You've got to make your connection with the people you're working with to reinforce that relationship and sort of that trust. So I think, you know, having been doing this now for six, six-plus weeks, I, I definitely think those relationships are stronger and those connections with the hybrid coaches are definitely better. But ultimately, they're providing support at home. They're offering Zoom sessions, sometimes it's just a quick content lesson, it's a review. A lot of the, the hybrid coaches have a background in a specific content area or multiple content areas. They all have access to Google Classroom, so they're definitely in tune with what the classes are doing. They communicate regularly with the, the teachers and special ed teachers. And that communication's ongoing through either emails, phone conversations. They do share a common spreadsheet which has some basic information where they're identifying a student was absent or this student needs some help. Hybrid coaches do have a sheet that has contact information for both students and parents, so they're supporting in that way. And they are participating in the half-day remote lessons. So they're really sort of immersing themselves in the grade level content. And ultimately, that relationship with the teacher and student. So, so in general, the, the coach position has evolved. And I think that the students are more comfortable, the teachers are more comfortable and we're sort of in a, in a stronger rhythm than they were, when we were at the very beginning of this. Student expectations, I talked a little bit about this in terms of a schedule. Students are really, this was like, this was the, one of the ones that I thought was going to be a challenge for us. And again, it's not perfect, but I think the expectation is really clear that students are required to follow a schedule. So, you know, they're not just at home popping in occasionally and just doing what they can when they want. They're required to submit things at the end of each period. So you have to follow a schedule to be successful in this. And again, to be honest, I haven't heard, there are a few, and this is where the hybrid coach comes in. So there are students that we may not, didn't turn anything in on a Monday, on a Monday, the hybrid coach is on them with the teacher the next day and they were turning back to the class and they're turning in their work. Students, for the most part, are doing a lot of their work through Google Classroom. And this is an opportunity where, where teachers and Google and some of the hybrid coaches can give feedback while the students are doing their work. So they're submitting work, they're getting feedback, it's timely. That digital notebook is a really, really clever, neat way of giving that immediate feedback. Students are required to attend live stream lessons. I'm going to talk a little bit about live stream lessons, we've done some surveys over the last month, both with students and staff. Currently, right now, we have about eighteen to nineteen teachers doing, doing live lessons, either for all of their classes, some of their classes on certain days, depending on class size. So they are required to attend those. And they're required to be checking in regularly with, with the hybrid, hybrid coaches. Synchronous learning, so, so as I mentioned the last, the last slide, we have about eighteen to twenty teachers doing ad hoc synchronous learning, live streaming lessons. We recently surveyed the staff and that's where we got that number of about eighteen to nineteen teachers. I think actually, it was a couple of weeks ago, I think that, that number has gone up a little bit. And the survey basically asked who's, who's doing live stream lessons, what, what platform do you prefer? And how do you think they're going on a scale of one to five? And ultimately, what are your challenges, if any? For the most part, they came in around three, meaning that they're going okay, but we do have our challenges with them. And I'll share some of the challenges in the next slide. We surveyed the students and really what we were looking to find is what are some of the challenges the students have? Originally, we're looking to see what they preferred Zoom versus Google Meets. As of this afternoon, we had about a hundred and thirty students respond. And believe it or not, it was pretty split. So students, some, we were around forty-six, fifty-four, in that range, Zoom to Meets. And again, I think it's really based on the teachers that are using it and some of the things that they're seeing as challenges that determine where we are. So their, their survey was pretty generic as well, what do you prefer? What do you like about Zoom, what do you like about Meets, what are your challenges and so forth? Finally, one of the things we did, because I think we're learning more about, like, we're learning more about hybrid learning, we're learning more about live streaming lessons. And, you know, I think I've said this before, I, I was a huge composer, fan of live streaming lessons. I thought that it was an opportunity for us to stay connected to students. And I thought that, that the hybrid model would be more successful with that sort of approach. I have shifted my, my feeling on that a little bit based on feedback from students, parents and teachers. I think there are some. And teachers. I think there are some challenges with, with synchronous learning. And ultimately, I think I said this in the last meeting. It does take away from the in-person learning. So those opportunities for students sometimes can be challenging. Based on managing a live lesson independently by yourself. And there's a lot, there's a lot of factors. Size of the class, the technology used, you have a. A co-teacher with you. Is there a special teacher working with you where you can kind of co-teach? But one of the things we did at our last faculty meeting last, on Monday. Was I selected five teachers. I reached out to them. I knew they were live streaming lessons. And I asked them if I could videotape a, about one or two minutes of how they do the lesson. Take some photos of what they're doing. And then I had them all present. At faculty, at a faculty meeting. And ultimately, what I had them do was answer some basic questions. How did you get? To where you are with technology? Because a lot of them, it wasn't like they just tried it once. They went through several, several rounds of what was going to work best. What technology were you using? How did you get to the technology? What are your challenges? What do you think your success is? And, you know, what is student engagement like? And it was, it was a, a real eye, but like eye opening experience for not only the, the, the teachers that are doing it, but also people that are considering doing it. Or have never done it. I think as a result of the meeting, some people are going to, going to give it a shot. Some people that have been doing it consistently. With large classes are going to sort of reduce it and do it occasionally. So we're still experimenting with that. So some of the pictures you see here, Scott, if you go back one slide. This happens to be Mr. Markram's class. It is a high school English, English class, the class I observed. They were, they were doing a, they were reading from a passage from a book. And they were able to collaborate and communicate. And basically the students ran the discussion. So if you look. Directly forward, you can see that. And again, this is where it gets really interesting because the teachers have sort of. Worked as departments to figure out the best setup. But in this situation, Keandra has a mini. LCD projector, which is projecting the Zoom session on the wall. So there's the students that are at home. And the students in class. So she has a document camera on the desk over here. And it's projecting so the kids at home can see the students in the classroom. Then she has her laptop and she's running the Zoom and she's also got another computer that's projecting the work that they're doing. So there's a lot of technology going on, but what was fascinating was she has, again, and English department with Mr. Yule. They have been working on a scenario that works best. And this is what they've come up with. So I was able to watch a, what really felt like a. A live lesson with both students at home and students in person. It worked out. It doesn't always work out that way, but there was a nice dialogue. And for a short amount of time, anyway, they were able to work together and collaborate. The next slide is a few other classes. On the top is Mr. Evans. And if you get a chance to see Mr. Evans. It looks like he's landing planes in his class. I mean, he's got four or five screens going. He's got a headset on. He's got speakers everywhere. And he has tried several different versions of this. And again, they all have their challenges, but ultimately he's able to have the students see. His. Whiteboard on the right, and then it's also his touchscreen. Smartboard. He projects the smart board. So as he's doing the work, the students can see it. He also has the students on another computer at home. And he's working to get them to interact together. The bottom left is, this is a co-taught class, one of our new CTE STEM classes that are co-taught by Mrs. Cornock. And Mrs. Waitner. And they have multiple computers going, document cameras. They have the same setup where they're projecting the students at home can see the live interactive board. And in this particular class, they were polling students both at home. And in person to get sort of feedback from everyone. And the last one is Mr. Cully's history class. You know, I'm just showing you some of the technology there. He's got a splitter that is, he's basically divided a few screens and. Trying to get students interact together. In this particular lesson, he had breakout rooms set up with kids at home and students in the class. So. Many different versions of that, but if you, if you, if you look at some of the things that have come out of our research and sort of the work we've done. To support this, you know, class size plays a huge fa, huge factor in the success of these, these virtual lessons. Connectivity is one of the issues that we have for students at home. Not so much in school, but you know, when we do have students live streaming in, at home. And we want them to interact with students in the classroom. There is a tremendous draw on the bandwidth in the building. You know, Stephen has said many times that it, when he just does a quick check on who's, what's drawing the most bandwidth. The Zoom and Google meets are kind of pulling a lot of the, a lot of the bandwidth. Managing remote, students in person and remote. I mean, there is, there is a component of. You know, as Ruby had said, the students will, will want to shut their screens off. We're not sure if they're engaged. And then, you know. Being able to, to manage the kids in, in, that are in person, because we value that time with those students. We want to make sure that's valuable for them when they're in person. Technology has its challenges. As you can see, I showed you four different. Versions of. Virtual learning and they're all very different. They've all used different, different ways to get to where they are. Some with success, some with, with some challenges. Student focus has been a challenge. And then ultimately, the one thing that we're all concerned about. Is screen time. I mean, for, for a virtual student. Whether they're synchronous, asynchronous, when they're home. You know, they're spending a tremendous amount of time on their, on the computer. And that's one of the things that came out of our surveys. This is information that came out of our surveys. There's a lot of positive things, but there's also challenges that we all face. In the hybrid model. And then our last slide. You know, ultimately. You know, I think ultimately the, the hybrid. Model that we've created at the middle high school is very different than what it's at the elementary school, but. You know, ultimately, I think, I think it's working. It's not perfect, but I think it's working. I have had parents reach out to me, to be honest, not many. But I've had parents reach out to me. That are looking for some additional support. They're looking for some more instruction. And we've done a couple of things to, to offer that support. So we've, the, the honor societies are doing, are offering peer tutoring. Mrs. Calvo has set that up and. It's again, it's slow going because the students don't know the older students and the peer tutoring will take some time, but that's an opportunity. There's always after school teacher support. We're still running after school sessions like we've done in the past. Mrs. Tykert has set up a tutoring program through a tutoring company, FEV Tutoring. I had a couple of parents reach out to me in the middle school level. Needed some more math instruction and. We were piloting this program and. I, I, I've set them up with this tutoring for the, for, for last week. I'm going to get feedback from the parents. They seemed okay with it. This program, I think Karen may have done a, done a, a little bit of a. Introduction on this, but it allows us to video, the company videotapes the tutor session so we can go back and see what the student's success rate was and so forth. And then of course, those students that are in the hybrid model that may need additional support. We do have some engineering options where they can jump into some engineering classes for additional instruction. And I think that's it. I mean, I think ultimately, you know, the hybrid model is working. It's not perfect, but. I, I have been. Pleasantly surprised at how well the kids have adapted to it. And again, the kids have been fantastic, resilient, and they've done a really nice job.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Does anybody have any questions or concerns or comments with Mr. Schultz on his presentation about hybrid at the middle high school? Jen, Jen, do you have a hand up?
Yes. Thank you so much, Mike. I really appreciate that. Feedback. I have two items. First, I have the same question for you that I sort of positioned to Ruby as far as. If you have a sense how teachers feel they're getting through curriculum. And if they feel like they're on track. Or if they feel, you know, especially with the high school. You know, we have our full remote kids are on the ingenuity program versus the hybrid. And I'm just wondering from an equity standpoint, if you feel like. Things are moving at an okay pace in the hybrid. That was the first part. And then the second piece was just to comment on the synchronous learning. I've actually. Received feedback. From more than one parent. They really like that some of their kids are able to. Zoom into live lessons. And so. I, I understand it doesn't work for everything, but I just want to commend your staff for. Being creative and thinking through those solutions because I think that the parents really, and, and the kids from. From the feedback I've received, which is only from a couple, but it was very positive. So I just wanted to throw that comment in there that I really appreciate. I know that. This is all new and it's challenging, but I think that, that's really great, all the work that they're doing there.
Yeah, thanks. So, you know, ultimately, the, the students with ingenuity, I, I had an opportunity on Wednesday to meet with the remote staff. And I know Karen's been working with them and we talked about that. We talked about the success of the engineering program and how students are doing. I, I definitely think it's more challenging for sixth and seventh grade students to be able to follow the, the ingenuity and the, the pace of the lessons. But ultimately, the way we set it up with, with all of the engineering classes is that we, we asked our content specialist, basically our department chairs. To make sure that the scope and sequence. Of the way a genuine sets up, you know, a history class. Is, is going to match up as best we can to, to our scope and sequence. Of our, in, you know, our, our in-person learners. Because we, we had to do that with the idea that at any point, these students can go from remote, remote to hybrid and back. So. That work has been done and it's ongoing. And I think that for the most part, in terms of the, the scope and sequence, the flow and the. Curriculum expectations. I think they're pretty consistent. And we continue to look at that. Matter of fact, we, we were, we're looking to revise some of the sixth and, sixth and seventh grade. Some of the eighth grade classes on ingenuity based on our meeting on Wednesday. We just think that some of the stuff that they're doing. Karen is going to work with the teachers and sort of revise the scope and sequence. And in some ways sort of reboot it a little bit because I think that it took the students some time to get used to what's going on. Now they're used to it, but they're a little behind the, the sort of the lesson progression. So the beauty of the program is it has the ability to sort of reset itself. So. Technically, I think they're supposed to be twenty-five percent through a particular. Subject area at this point, and some of them are around ten to twelve percent. So by adjusting the, the framework a little bit, adjusting the content. Not necessarily the content, but the way it's delivered. We can get them caught up and back on track, which ultimately, you know, when they see their grade, it's, it's better. And they, they're not going to miss much because they're still following the, the content of what we're doing. So that, that's an ongoing process. It's going to continue to be that way. And ultimately, I think that the remote students, to answer your question about, do you think that remote will be behind or not getting the same? Level of instruction or being behind. You know, I think obviously in English, they're, they're going to be right, they have two English teachers from our school that have taken on that hybrid model for sixth and seventh and then. Eighth and ninth. So ultimately, I think they're going to be strong there. We're thinking about creating some HLA classes, which is a history and language arts. We do that in some of our. Classes now at the high school, eight and nine classes. So build, bringing that, you know, that English and history class together with the instructor, one of our teachers. We're going to reinforce that piece. And I do think that the, the math piece. Most of the kids are doing well with it, but those that need a little bit of help, we're, we're taking advantage of those tutoring services. Which again, the beauty of that program is you can, you submit sort of where you are and where you're struggling. And they can adapt and support in that way. So that's sort of new to us. But the, the math piece is something that we can get, provide support for. So. You know, ultimately, I think we're, we're, we're continuing to looking at it. We're doing the best we can with it. And those that are reaching out, and I encourage people to reach out, we have ways to support.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Schultz? Stephanie.
Hello. I just wanted to say, thank you very much for the presentation, for the level of detail that you went into in this presentation. Again, similar to what I said to Ruby. Knew a lot of parents are seeing kids learning at home for the first time and things might look foreign to them. So I think this is a really good. Perspective for them to see. I appreciate all of the efforts. I know that this is so challenging and I love the fact that you're, that you're, you know, having the teachers collaborate and share what's working in their classrooms. And, you know, what they're doing in terms of technology, because this is new to all of us. And I just, I, I love that. You're bringing that sense of collaboration. And, you know, constantly reviewing things and, and information sharing and all of that. So I greatly appreciate. Your efforts and I appreciate you sharing this with the community because I think it's important. For people to, to, to remember that we are in the middle of a pandemic. You know, and that everyone is trying to, to make the best of, of what we have to work with. So. I, you know, I wish we had an unlimited technology budget. We don't. But to see what these teachers are able to do by using these, you know, different pieces of technology in such creative ways. Is, is really inspiring. So I just wanted to say thank you. So if you can please pass that on to, you know, your, your staff. It's pretty amazing. So thank you very much.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, I just to throw in sort of to back up what Stephanie just said and support that. And. The fact that earlier, you know, we are talking about the difficulties that parents are going through, but I think the thing to not forget is kind of what Stephanie said, everybody's, this is difficult for everybody. This is hard on teachers. This is hard on admin. This is hard on students. This is hard on families. This is a shared difficulty that we have right now. And, and I think everybody. You know, taking a step back and breathing and looking what actually is going on here is there is a lot of hard work going on here. And, and. And no way do I ever want to diminish what teachers are doing because everybody is working their best to try and make this work the best they can. It kind of feels like trying to make a square wheel move. But we're moving it and, and, and it's happening. It's just not happening the way we would all want it to. And I want to thank Ruby and Mike for their, for their presentations they put together tonight and the time that they're putting into this. And all the staff who's really working their best to make the best out of this situation that is not a great situation. So. Just to back up on that. Thank you very much.
James. Mike, I just had. You answered part of my question about people reaching out to you. Or the teachers of their, if their child needed extra help or. They thought their child wasn't being challenged enough. We've had reports of that as well. So it's good to know you guys are working with that or on that. But I'm going to ask the same question. About lunches. And specifically about lunches. And one of the concerns that we had or heard about was cafeteria workers trying to. Deal with the kids, you know, and then, and the keeping the distancing and things like that. Have you found any issue with that? On the in-person.
Not, I mean, no, I mean, you mean the, the monitors or people working in the kitchen or food service?
Well, we had, we had some people that were working food service at that, that. Just gave us their opinion on, on that when we were choosing models. But.
I think it is going back to the very beginning when we were talking about it conceptually. Has been any specific concerns raised?
No, no. Yeah, there were, you know, the kids at that age.
Oh, I think, well, so if you ask the, the lunch monitors, they, they love it. It's quieter. It's, you know, it's, it's tough for the kids, clearly. I mean, they're not used to sitting in separate seats, six feet apart. They miss that social piece. But again, like if you walk into the, to the cafeteria, it's, it's orderly. The kids still can, they got to pick their seats. They're talking to their friends. They're just adapting, you know, they. They get in line, they follow the rules, they socially distance in line, they sit down, they take their mask off, they have lunch, they have seemed to have a good time. They're not sitting with their ten kids at a table anymore, but they're still having conversation, they're socializing. They're just happy to be there, I think. Their mask goes back on and they empty their trays and off they go. So again, they're, they're, they're very comfortable. The. The staff has done a really nice job in food services that we've got those new service lines going in, in both sides. We kind of brought the lunches together, so. The entire cafeteria is open, which I really like that. I, I think I would continue doing that in the future. But I mean, from my perspective, I think the lunches is going, going really well. I mean, the only thing that would, we would change would be. You know, if we could go back to tables and the kids could have a little more time together and socialize, that would be fantastic. But other than that, I think. For what they have and the setup we have and the process we put in place, they've adapted very well.
Thank you. This is just the first time I've had an opportunity to ask. And since so, we were talking about the hybrid model. Just both questions popped into my head with, to ask you and Ruby. Anyway, anyone else on questions or concerns for Mike? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. All right, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Really appreciate your presentation.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going on to item E. Yeah, item E, special education survey data.
Yep. And just again, give me a second to transition here. Give Mike the opportunity to leave as a panelist and invite Karen on. A lot of presentation sites, we have to get all our panelists on board.
Sounds like we're running a game show, you know, you have like panelists.
You get called up to the to the panel.
Yeah.
Like the Price is Right, you get called out of the audience. Hold up.
I'm not going to call you Bob Barker, Scott.
All right, Karen, you should be able to interview yourself and interview one.
Okay.
Hello, Karen.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Can I, while you're pulling that up, Scott, can I just have a minute after listening to everything to just express a couple thoughts? I know it's I know it's late, but I spoke recently at the elementary with the elementary school just regarding that fear of regression of skills, especially kind of in the younger students. And I just want to suggest that we might need to reflect a little bit on our mindsets around learning. And if you look culturally and historically on impacts on child development and learning, it's clear that kids continue to learn and the brain continues to develop really diverse environments. So, you know, a lot of learning happens at home and in the community and outside of school. And it's happened during, you know, war times and during depressions and natural disasters. And it happens in cultures that don't have traditional schools like like we do. And although I really, you know, a lot of learning does happen in the schools and needs to, there's, you know, reading has to be directly taught. And there's a lot of, you know, skills that need that kind of instruction. A lot happens outside. And in, you know, in my personal opinion, I feel like it's a little, I feel a little sad that I feel like society, as a society, we're kind of losing some of those other opportunities for learning outside of school. And we might be missing out on some opportunities for accepting those types of learning by trying too hard to replicate school, the actual in-person school in this environment. And our schools have a scope and sequence for learning, but the brain doesn't have those narrow windows. Kids are going to move on with learning. Their brains, they're still developing and their brains will be ready to take on the learning when we get back to person instruction. And the schools will adjust the curriculum to match those needs. And if we can really be open to it, we may find that some kids will really surprise us with some growth that they've had during this period of time. And if we can really open ourselves up to that natural learning kids can do through play and self-guided exploration and interactions with their families, that could be up some, you know, there can be some powerful learning and growth there. So you don't want to minimize, like I know there's so many other factors and that feed into the stress of not having access to schools. You know, childcare being a big one, social opportunities being a big one. But if we're really just looking at child development and learning, I really think, you know, we need to just be open to the idea that kids are going to keep learning and they are learning in their families and they are learning at home. And just by experience, you know, just by daily experiences. And one of the most important factors for learning is having kids that want to learn. And if if we can keep that as our like key focus and keep our kids wanting to learn, then they're going to be okay. So anyway, I just wanted to those thoughts out there.
Yeah.
We start looking at.
Thought provoking.
I think last time we were on, there was a request for me to just survey the special ed parents a little bit and see how they're feeling about services, which was good. It was it was a little eye-opening for me, a little disappointed in some ways. So it definitely led to some things that I will I will implement and try to try to work on. I did get, we got about 92 responses and they did look to be like pretty evenly spaced between the different age groups. So I did ask for those age, you know, those age groups. I asked if they had had their phone caller email check in with the student special ed teacher. So it ended up 75%. I would have liked to have seen that be a little bit higher, said they did. Now, some of those other, all those little bands of color are just people made additional comments like yes at the beginning of school, which really was all I was expecting. So some of those are still yeses too, but that 15% obviously did not have that direct contact with their special ed teacher. So we will look into that a little bit. I do think, you know, we do, we historically had a problem with just keeping up with the right contact information for people. Like, so that's an ongoing problem always is to make sure we have the most current email, the most current phone number. I do know that a lot of teachers did let me know that, look, I tried to reach his family like three or four times. I never got a call back. I never got a response. So I do think there's a little bit of that going both ways and and probably just a little bit of us still trying to to make absolutely sure that we have the right contact information for people. So then I also just asked to say, you know, do you know who to reach out to if you have questions related to IEP services? So it's a little disconcerting to me that 16% of the responses actually didn't feel like they knew who they could reach out to. So I will definitely work on, not sure, not sure what to do with that, but I will definitely work on trying to get that to the, I would have hoped that like the majority of people knew who to reach out to. And then I asked if they had, students had received, if the parents had received their students COVID learning plan. Now, there was a little, I do realize that there was a little bit of air on my part in this survey. Because although I knew that the full remote parents at the middle high school hadn't gotten theirs yet because we had hired the special ed teacher fairly recently and we're still working on those. I put a contingency in the survey for that. But our kids that are in the severe needs classrooms that come in all four days and the kids in preschool that come in all four days, they wouldn't have a COVID learning plan because they're getting their full, pretty much their full instruction. And I didn't put a contingency in there for that. So some of those not sure what that is could be those, although all special ed parents got these in the spring of last year as well. And we tried to keep with the same form and format so that it wouldn't be confusing. So the fact still that we've got a third of people not sure what it is and 9% said they didn't get it. But some of that could have been some of those students that wouldn't necessarily have gotten it. I do have some ideas on how I can work on that. And I have already asked the whole special ed department to reach out again to all their families. See if parents didn't, you know, know what it is that they were getting and understand what it is and just check in on that.
Excuse me, Karen. Is this survey anonymous? Do you know who the respondent was? Okay.
Yeah.
I was just, I, the way you were speaking, it made it sound like it was anonymous. Because I thought if it wasn't, you'd know who the respondents were and you can just contact them back. But okay, that makes sense.
I know. And now, and that's difficult because some people made comments about things that they needed or wanted, but didn't put contact information in. So now I have no way of knowing who those people are related to those comments. You know, I'll try to do the best I can to to try to figure that out. But um, but I did want it to, I I did make it anonymous, so I don't know who all those people are.
Okay, well, if you made a comment on the survey, contact Karen again at the front at the central office.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the answer.
And then I ask in terms of, does your student have regular weekly scheduled time for special ed instruction? And is it both in-person and remotely or only in-person or remotely only? Now, obviously, the remotely only are the full remote kids, so they don't have an in-person opportunity. Close to 60% are getting it both in-person and remotely. And then about, you know, a little over 25% are getting it in in-person only, which isn't necessarily unreasonable. We have an awful lot of kids that have IEPs for just like one service, so that they they may only have speech. They may only have counseling on their IEPs. They may only have a study skills class. And it's not unreasonable that some kids really don't require those services outside of a couple of days a week, so. I did ask people about their therapies too. I wanted to check in about speech, OTPT counseling. Have they connected with the therapist? I will be meeting with the therapy team because I'm not sure. So some students didn't receive those services. So in gold, that's kids that don't have any of those services. But you know, there's a 31% of kids that I assume do usually get those services that haven't made the connection with their therapist. So I'm going to have to try to figure out where that's coming from. It may be the counseling piece. I'm assuming that some of it is those kind of lunch bunch kind of groups and stuff like that that are harder to have during these periods. I really don't think it's very much of the speech OT and PT, but I am going to meet with the therapist just to check in and make sure. So for follow, and then I know you guys have access to all the comments. So there was definitely a range of, you know, a lot of comments. And there was definitely some good suggestions in there and a few kind of comments in the middle. But honestly, that, you know, I think you'll be able to see that it's really one extreme or the other. So people are either really frustrated and really upset or people are really grateful and thankful and saying that thing, you know, they feel like everyone's doing a great job of supporting them. So you know, it's hard because everyone's going to the same school and to have such different experiences or feelings, you know, it's it's hard to try to figure out where that's coming from. Now, obviously, kids are working with different teams of teachers. But I really feel like, yeah, it's, you know, we'll work, we'll keep working on it. And, you know, I hear I hear the frustrations of some of them and I'm very grateful that it's, some people are finding that, you know, they feel like things are working and that they're grateful for the services, but.
If I only to jack on that as two, number one, for the committee, I haven't put the comments in the background yet. So I will put the comment to the background so you can see them. So they haven't seen all the comments yet from the survey.
Oh, okay. All right.
I just did, we just collated after and I didn't put it back, but I'll put it in so you'll be able to take a look at them. And then Karen, I really also think that the, and I don't think this is good or bad. I think it's also just a reflection of people's general feelings about schools as a whole right now. When we, when we've asked people about any of the services, you know, when we were full of road, when in our current hybrid model, there's been a range of responses. Some people saying it's really working well. It's great. Things are going well for me. Thank you. Some people saying I'm really struggling. And I think, I think part of that is just a large reflection of what's happening throughout the entire school system. And in some of those conversations we've had tonight, just in terms of, you know, how people are responding to the entire pandemic and where we are and the status and all those things. I think it was actually kind of reflective of people's thoughts on a lot of topics that we discussed.
Yeah, I agree. And I do feel like actually, I mean, we're surveying people more now than we ever have before, just because we're in these, you know, we're trying different things and we want to find out. But the reality is if I surveyed, you know, all, you know, 300 to 400 families that, you know, have some kind of special ed services, even in in-person at any given time, there's going to be some frustrations and, you know. So I, you know, I do think that that there would be some of that no matter what, but it's definitely enhanced by the situation we're in. So in terms of what I will be doing to follow up, so I've already asked the special ed teachers to connect with parents again regarding the COVID learning plans. And I will have be having them go over them at IEP meetings. So IEP meetings are definitely being scheduled. They're in process. They're going constantly. So families are getting together with their IEP teams and that'll be a good opportunity. And some people did put that in their comments that I've got an IEP meeting coming up. I'll be able to talk about it then. So, you know, I, we will make sure to go over the COVID learning plans though, as during those IEP meetings, just to make sure parents understand them. I do need to do the parent rights presentation, the yearly parent rights presentation. So I will do that in a remote way, which maybe will actually usually, there is very few people that attend that. And so maybe more people will attend, given the format of being able to do it remotely and just given the situation. And so I will add in information on the COVID learning plans into that. I, like I said, I am going to meet with the therapist, try to figure out where some of that, make sure that they, you know, are seeing all their students. And then we are continuing to try to make sure we have updated contact information. Because one of the things that happened was I sent that first, I sent the survey out once through Blackboard, but was worried that some of the emails weren't all in there because the number of people, the emails that I had to send out just didn't seem quite high enough. So then I got, I got the group made in App and and sent that out just recently. Sent the survey out again through that, through that group. But then I had a lot of parents, I actually found out I had a lot of people that actually shouldn't have been as special ed. So I had like a, all families in that mail. We do really need to do some work on making sure we have the right, you know, group to send emails out to, the right contact information for parents. And that's just an ongoing process. And I will say, just for your perspective, like I said, the communication is, it's hard for parents too. They're getting a lot of emails. They're getting, you know, some people are better at their mail than others. We have routinely, you know, for years, every year, we send probably a third of our IEPs out like three or four times before we get a signature and get it returned. So that communication, that two-way communication is just something that we constantly have to work on. But it's kind of comes from both both sides. And then like Mike was talking about, we are working on adding various tutoring services. I do feel like, as opposed to pushing for, you know, the extra day, I want my kid in for the nine to 12. I think the tutoring can be a much more effective service for a lot of students with IEPs because you can really target the area that they they specifically need. So I think the more that we can find ways to provide some extra tutoring for some students, I think that'll help. So we do, like Mike said, have the peer tutoring going on. The FE tutoring platform is something we're exploring. That's, it is an on-demand platform. We're just trying it out in school right now, but it does, they do go down to third grade. But kids can actually like log in and request tutoring on a specific thing at any time, night or day. And they would then have tutors pop on and be able to help them through a problem. But there are a little, a few little glitches and kind of interesting things about the way the platform works. So we're still trying to work on that to see if it's going to be viable. And then, you know, we do reach out to teachers, but most of the teachers have said they just, they just don't have the time right now, given all the other things they're doing to do additional tutoring. So I've had to reach outside of our staff to look for tutors, both live and remote. But we'll continue to do that and continue to try to provide those services for families as well.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Is it?
Questions or if there's any other, anything else that you were looking for in terms of information? But, you know, I do appreciate the the push to do that because, you know, it did lead to definitely a few things that I think we'll be able to do to help out and make things a little better.
It's good. Thank you very much, Karen. Stephanie, you had to hand up?
I did. Thank you. Karen, I just wanted to say thank you so much for putting this together. I know like everyone else, everyone's inundated and it is challenging, but I do I do appreciate you soliciting feedback from families. And, you know, I know that the actions that you have listed that you're going to take, I think will be helpful also. And I just wanted to say thank you so much because I so appreciate, you know, your dedication, your commitment to the students in our district and I appreciate your efforts. So thank you very much for reporting back to us. I appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments, questions for Karen? No, seeing none. Karen, I want to thank you as well for that very thorough presentation. And I'm sure the community definitely appreciates your efforts in going through and finding some things that need some attention. And I'm sure you'll give it your all as you always do. And uh, I'm sure you'll give it your all as you always do. Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going on to item F, student migration data from October first.
Um, nevermind.
Okay.
Alright, um, so last month, uh, we looked at our October enrollment. And uh, we said our enrollment was down by ninety six students uh, compared to two thousand nineteen, October one. There's several documents I linked into your background for you to review. A list of students who live in Carver but are being educated elsewhere. A ten-year review of the data of where students are. And then also a survey that was done by um, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents that gives us some statewide perspective on, on the loss that districts are seeing throughout the Commonwealth. Most districts are decreasing their enrollment based on increases in homeschool and based on uh, decreases in kids enrolling in kindergarten. And that does uh, factor in a lot into our enrollment uh, information. I'll just quickly pull up the documents just for the community to see them. And then I, I kind of just have some data points I'm going to go through, if that's okay with everybody. It's not how I wanted to open that. Give me a second. Try that again. So just for the community members who are here, um, and I know the community members, and maybe some of our new community members, this is a document that we actually look at yearly. It, part of our responsibility is to account for every school-aged person or every school-aged student who lives in Carver and where they attend school. So, because the reality is until the age of sixteen, everyone's supposed to be in school. And it's actually our responsibility to account for everyone. So this is, obviously, we know the students who are with us. This is a list of every other educational opportunity that students take part in uh, who live in Carver. And right now, there are two hundred and ninety-four students, school-aged kids who live in Carver but are participating in um, a different educational opportunity and a list of schools and where they're attending. You know, Oxford and Williams has five students. I know even Baptist has two, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not going to read through the whole list for everybody. And then with this, we also kind of did a breakdown of by grade, of who's in private schools, who's in charter schools, who's attending virtual academies, uh, who's attending vocational agricultural schools, who's school choicing out, uh, and then our number of kids who are homeschooling. So this is just giving that accounting for everybody. And I know the school committees have this in their background. Take a look at. The other document is kind of a ten-year review of what's been happening with how many, what's our percentage of kids who are seeking educational alternatives someplace else, uh, or in a different form. And, you know, ultimately, over time, over the past ten years, we've gone from nine point three percent of the school-aged population uh, attending school in a different setting to this year, a high of sixteen point four. And obviously, we're going to come back to this sixteen point four because it's really driven by uh, our increase in students who have chosen to homeschool. But obviously, over time, there's been a slow increase of students uh, seeking other educational opportunities. It's also important to note that since two thousand and ten, there's also been more opportunities. So down the list to the bottom, you're Rising Tide and Sturgis have been open since nineteen ninety-eight. But since two thousand and ten, you've added uh, Virtual Academy at Greenfield, uh, the MAP Academy, uh, Techer Academy. You know, so the opportunities for kids to seek alternatives have also increased. So with, with there being more opportunities and more alternatives, some kids have chosen some of those different uh, alternatives. And I'm just going to kind of go through uh, a whole bunch of data uh, that's related to these two documents. So um, in, in two thousand and twenty, we have forty-three uh, additional students who live in Carver but are seeking alternative educational alternatives more than last year. The largest increase has been in homeschooling. Currently, we have sixty-six students who are being homeschooled, representing thirty-six families. Last year, there were twenty-six students in thirteen families. So it's obvious an increase of forty students. And the pandemic is a major cause of this shift. And I'm going to actually go to one of my key takeaways, uh, which is at the end of my document. You can't see it. This is consistent with districts across the state. So the Mass Association of School Superintendents uh, did a survey uh, two weeks ago. The survey included a hundred and seventy-six school districts, including Carver. I participated in the survey. Looking at October one enrollment. This, the results showed that across the hundred and seventy-six districts in Massachusetts who partook, partook in the survey, there's been a hundred and eight percent increase in students and families choosing homeschooling. So pretty much everyone's homeschool number across the state of Massachusetts has doubled. The other thing that districts have seen is, and actually more so than we have, is those hundred and forty, those hundred and seventy-six school districts have seen a forty-two percent decline enrollment. That was, the forty-two percent of their decline enrollment was based on kids not enrolling in pre-K and kindergarten. Now, that's affected us because we've lost, our estimate is, our general kindergarten class is about a hundred and twenty-five kids and we have ninety-nine. So our estimate is we've lost twenty-six to thirty students uh, who would normally have uh, participated in kindergarten. So if you look at our increase in forty students from homeschooling and our decrease of twenty-six students who didn't enroll in kindergarten, in theory, um, you know, that, that, that accounts in some ways for uh, sixty-six or sixty-six kids and almost seventy percent of our decline enrollment as a school district. And so really, the homeschooling piece and the non-enrolling kindergarten are major contributors to our decrease in enrollment by ninety-six students. Some other numbers, our charter school enrollment has increased from fifty-four to seventy-one students. Uh, Rising Tide went from thirty-five to forty-two. MAP Academy also increased from seven to nineteen. So we have twelve additional students at MAP Academy. Five of those nineteen did not actually attend Carver High School. They were attending another educational alternative, left that alternative and ended up going to MAP. But since they're Carver residents, you know, they count against us in terms of the charter school number. Those students were at Old Colony, uh, a couple were, were Rising Tide, so they were at a different charter school and transitioned over to uh, MAP Academy. We also have a couple of students at MAP Academy who moved into Carver and never attended the Carver Public Schools, but now live in Carver and are attending MAP. Obviously, our increase in charter school enrollment um, has a, has a large economic impact on the district of all of these movements. You know, because we pay, we pay for each kid who's at a charter school. Uh, there's a cost associated with those uh, seventy-one students. And maybe, maybe I shouldn't say the word pay. We lose funding uh, based on the number of students who are enrolled in charter schools. School choice, uh, so we have nine students this year uh, who are school choicing into another school district. Uh, that's down from fifteen last year. Uh, but the positive on school choice is we have fifty-nine students who are coming in via school choice. So in school choice, we're plus fifty students. And that's an important piece again, because that helps mitigate the financial impact of our increased charter school numbers. Virtual academies, we've decreased from six to four students. Uh, agricultural school enrollment stayed consistent. Our Old Colony enrollment stayed consistent. Uh, it went from ninety-two to ninety-five students. But if you look at that chart uh, of where students are attending, the ten-year review. Sorry, let's very slowly look at it. You know, if you look over time, our number of students attending vocational and Aggie schools stays pretty consistent between ninety-five and a hundred. And it, if I, we have this data back another ten years, if we went back ten more years, twenty years out, we would see Carver's always had ninety-five to a hundred kids attending the vocational and the Aggie schools. Uh, and I totally support that, you know, the vocational opportunities are different opportunities for kids. Obviously, I'll try to support anybody who's making, you know, families have the right to make the choice. And I'm going to support families making a decision that they think is the best decision for them. But also in terms of some schools, you know, we're looking for, we want to run, we want kids to want to stay in Carver. Uh, but there are some opportunities to vocational schools that we just don't offer. Uh, within our school district, it makes sense that kids are attending there. And that's our most consistent number in this whole presentation is, you know, for the past twenty years, the Carver Public, Carver Kids, Carver's had ninety-five to a hundred kids uh, at the old, at Old Colony and at the uh, agricultural schools. That number's, you know, really consistent. You know, our, our religious private school enrollment has decreased from forty-two to twenty-five students. And that's really because of the closing of Sacred Heart High School and Coil High School. We only had a couple of kids at Coil, more Sacred Heart. But that is also a number that's decreased steadily over the past several years. So our, our key, our families that were selecting religious private schools and other private schools, that number is going down. But conversely, our charter school number is, is going up. And students attending private academies have also decreased. So what are my overall takeaways from this? Uh, overall enrollment decline primarily is based on fewer K registrations and an increase in homeschooling. And this is, as I said, this is consistent with districts across the state, very consistent with the data that's in your background for the hundred, uh, the survey of the hundred and seventy-six school districts. We have seen a decrease in the number of students attending private schools, but I think there's been a shift and with an increase in the number of students attending charter schools, which obviously has uh, a financial impact on the district. And as I said, our plus fifty in school choice though, helps mitigate some of that financial impact. And I really think we'll see some of these numbers rebound uh, once the pandemic ends. And then also as a result of our implementation of the Pathways Program. You know, as I spoke about earlier, you know, we COVID put a little bit of, a little bit of a dent in terms of our marketing and our selling of the new programming that we're going to be offering at the middle high school level. And we're going to, it's our, now our opportunity to do that again. And we want to start that at our next school committee meeting with a presentation of what's happening with pathways and how it's being implemented. We're going to do parent presentations, student presentations for the whole district to say that we do want to, um, you know, really focus on offering programming uh, at, at our middle high school level that ensures that students are both college and career-ready. And that's our focus and that's the direction we're moving in as a school district. And we want to make sure the community uh, is fully aware of that. So I think between those two things and obviously, you know, I do think when there's a shift in the pandemic, I think our homeschool numbers will go down. I think many families selected homeschool because of where we are. You know, in the, in the current pandemic, and I think the numbers uh, across the state kind of support uh, that position. So that, that's an overview of the data and our accounting of where the, where the kids in Carver uh, go to school.
All right. Thank you, Scott, for that presentation. Does anybody have any questions or comments uh, for Scott on the migration data presentation? Do I see anyone? No, I don't see anyone. Okay, well, I'll just say thank you, Scott. And oh, actually, um, Scott, one of the things we talked about last year, and I think the year before, was a survey, surveying the parents for finding possible reasons for leaving the district.
So we, we, we have done that survey. We actually surveyed, and the last two years, I showed you the results of those surveys. I brought those to the school committee and we've looked at, we've given uh, the result, you know, we've asked every student who's left the district to do a survey. This year, honestly, when we closed, we did not do that. Uh, so the parents said, the parents who left over this summer during the pandemic were not asked to complete the survey uh, as to their rationale, their choices to why they were leaving the district. That might have been an oversight in terms of us, in terms of not physically being in the buildings. And so that survey, that, we didn't collect that data this year.
Okay, was it just?
Well, we can certainly go back to collecting that data for everyone who looks to leave the district. I mean, I know a lot of our homeschooling, we had a lot of conversations with those people. And I do feel strongly based on those conversations that a lot of the homeschooling is pandemic-related. And I, as I said, I think the data from across the state supports that. Uh, and same with the kindergarten enrollment. Now, I, you know, it's hard for us to tell, you know, because no one called us and said, we're not going to enroll our kid in kindergarten. It's, so there actually were some conversations. There were some parents who called and had conversations about kindergarten enrollment, the pandemic. But, you know, if you look at our kindergarten, we've been a hundred and twenty-five kids every year for really seven or eight years. Uh, and I do think that that drop down is based on uh, families just choosing not to participate this year based on the pandemic. And again, that's supported by, that's supported by what every district and, or at least the hundred and seventy-six that took the survey. We're seeing the exact, very similar data.
All right. Can we uh, add that in for the next year's data or?
We'll go back and we'll make sure we survey everybody who leaves the district.
Thank you. Yeah, just to help us to make us, make our district better.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, uh, thank you for, for, for that presentation. All right. So moving on to upcoming events.
Uh, as, as we started to, we'll make sure that at least once a month, we kind of give uh, the community and everybody just a view of the list of the upcoming events. We'll make sure that the paper are aware of them. The reality is there are fewer events this year uh, because of the nature of the pandemic. Uh, but here's just a listing of things that are upcoming. Uh, the middle high school course that happened today was on there. We do have parent conferences of families in both, from both the elementary school and the high schools. We're getting information from, from the administration and from teachers about upcoming parent conferences. Uh, the elementary school uh, is on the eighteenth, as is the middle high school. The elementary schools break in their conferences over two nights for grades three, four, and five uh, because they want the opportunity to see, uh, both team teachers to see all the kids on their team, uh, which would represent really almost forty kids. So they're going to actually do two nights of conferences, three through five, to make sure that they see everybody. So that their second night of conferences uh, is in December, I believe it's December ninth. And so here's our list of upcoming events.
Great. It's good to see that again anyways.
One last item.
Yeah, one last item, recommendation from the superintendent request to recycle technology items.
Yes, we just did. All these are obsolete, outdated. Uh, Brad actually compiled this list. I don't know if he wants to talk about it. I don't think he really needs to. This is from all, it's all technology items that are cannot be upgraded or obsolete or are dead.
And there's no useful life to move them throughout the town to any other department. They're pretty much just donezo.
Motion for this? Brad?
Yes, sorry.
Right, um, okay, so we need a motion to uh, to accept the recycling of the technology items.
No moves.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, roll call, vote. Start with Stephanie.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jen Pratt?
Jen Pratt, aye.
Jason?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James?
James O'Brien, aye.
And Andy Carter really, aye. It's unanimous. And then we go to our reports from the school committee. Anybody have anything? If you'd like to impart before we leave. Who my Jen, okay, Jen has her microphone on.
I just said an unmuted it, but I guess.
Sorry, I didn't see it on this.
I unmuted to do the voting. Um, no, I just, um, I think we had a lot of great presentations tonight. I want to thank everybody who took the time to prepare for this meeting and to bring all this information to us. You know, I think that, you know, it, it may go without saying, but I think it's worth saying anyway that, you know, I recognize the tremendous job that um, everybody's doing throughout the schools. From, you know, teachers and paras to administration and support staff. You know, and I know uh, sometimes in these meetings, it can come across, you know, a lot of like criticisms or things that aren't being done well, but that doesn't. But that doesn't, shouldn't take away from everything that is being done well. And the children in our town are learning, they may not be learning the way that we want, they may not be learning the speed we like. They may not be learning, you know, the manners that we would prefer, you know, we weren't living in a pandemic. But they are learning and we are progressing and, you know, I think just having the attitude of continual improvement, you know, and just striving to, you know, get better is the right attitude to have. And so I just, I'm thankful for everyone that put in work and effort and research and, and for, you know, the, you know, the challenges that lay ahead and the work that lays ahead, you know, just a preemptive thank you for the things that are going to be happening because none of this is easy. But I do feel like we are working as a great team and progressing our town forward and doing, you know, really good for our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone else want to say anything before we leave? Seeing, seeing none.
Sorry, my, my touchpad is, was asleep. Anyway, I just wanted to really quickly say thank you. I know that we had a, it's quarter past 10, it's been a, it's been, it's been a meeting today. But there's been a lot of good data and a lot of good information shared. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that contributed. And I'm looking forward to seeing more positive things. It was great to see student council here. It was great to, you know, get a little information from sports and to hear about the Coral concert that was put together today. So it's really great to see, you know, some of those fun extracurriculars that the students are craving as their families are as well. So I look forward to seeing more of those events shared with us. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Stephanie. All right, anyone else? Okay, I'm the last one. I would say it's been a long meeting, a lot of stuff packed into it. I want to thank everyone that did all their presentations, they were terrific, and everyone that came and everyone that watched in Area 58 for putting this on cable for us. And, and the YouTube channel. I'd like to remind everybody, November 11th is Veterans Day. Please say thank you to a veteran. It's not Memorial Day, you don't have to, it's not about cemetery that day, but that'll help too. But it's for the veterans we have out there who volunteered to defend our country. And we have one here in our, on our committee. I'll say thank you for your service, James. So from a while back, yep. I don't know if anybody else was in the military and amongst us, anybody else? No? Okay, well, so if you see a veteran out there, a guy with a Vietnam hat or a, whoa, if you're lucky enough to see a guy with a World War II hat on or, or Korea, you know, say thank you or buy him a coffee or something. They're special people. And I would entertain a motion, who adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, that was the fastest motion.
I'm really tired.
All right, we have a motion, a second, roll call, vote. I'll start with James O'Brien.
James O'Brien, aye.
Stephanie Clarity.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jen Pratt.
Jen Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
And Andy Cottrelli, aye. It's unanimous. We are adjourned at 10:18.